Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning.
We're going to gavel in and ask that you rise for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to our Texas flag. And this morning invocation, we don't have a pastor or reverend rabbi this morning. Okay? It'll help me settle. I'll start. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather here this morning to do good things for your people. Allow us to show that there can be unity in differences, that there can be love amongst a world that seems so divided so often. Guide us today so that we may act in a way that comports with the tremendous obligations that we feel, the burdens that we must bear, so that we may say that we are doing the very best that we can to provide for our community. We ask that you place your loving arms around all those in law enforcement, all those so far away from us protecting us. We ask that you heal the sick and that you comfort the families of those that are suffering and those that have experienced recent loss. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Judge, Mr. Amadas is saying that there's no audio.
There is now.
Okay, thank you.
We're all good now? Yes, ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. For the clerk, it's 8:43 a.m. Imagining we started just a few minutes before that. We also have a quorum present. I certify that as the presiding officer, Commissioner Amadas is online. And just give us the thumbs up that you can hear now, Commissioner. I got the thumbs up. Commissioner Hernandez, Gonzalez, and Chesney present, including myself. The date is January 26, 2022. We are at 901 North Leopard, Nuasis County Courthouse on the third floor of Nuasis County Commissioner's courtroom. At this time, I'll direct your attention to Timothy Everest, our risk manager, and ask that he present safety briefing for all of us.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. We're meeting here today on the third floor of the Nuasis County Courthouse, 901 Leopard Street. Restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium as you exit the courtroom past the Human Resources office. Please note, there's a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom. There are also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium area. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located in the atrium wall next to the Human Resources office. Participants responsible for dying, 911 in an event of emergency will be conning. In the event of an evacuation, the aggressed route will be down the atrium stairs, exiting the La Pan Street entrance and assembling in the parking lot across the street. Should there be a need to shelter in place, court attendees will remain in the courtroom. Depending upon the severity of the incident, the courtroom's double doors will be secured and remain secured until given further instructions from the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. Our shared safety topics are the member applications for the nominations for the 2022 Nuasis County Loss Control Committee will be disseminated throughout the county in the coming weeks. That concludes my safety brief, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you so much, Timothy. We're going to move on to public comment. We do have, I have at least eight people on my list, and I'll remind everybody online that if you wish to make public comment, that all you have to do is raise your virtual icon of a hand, and we will recognize you at the appropriate time. For those of you in the courtroom, the only thing we do is we clean the podium in between speakers. If you'll just give it a little pause after I call your name. And the first person that we have is Mr., is it pronounced Furkin Lawrence?
Yes.
Hi, Lawrence Furkin. Welcome, sir. And you may proceed.
Handouts, so...
Yes, sir. You can proceed. The governmental affairs officer will take those.
Handouts and distributive to commissioners and whoever you'd like.
We'll take them. And just because there's new faces and new names, I always do like to remind everybody how much we value public comment here at Commissioner's Court. But just to remind you-
I'm sorry.
-you'll give us information, and then we won't-
Ma'am.
...state back. Yes, sir?
One of those is mine. I'm sorry. The one with the, yeah, thanks.
I was just saying that, that we won't respond formally in this forum, but rest assured, anything you give to the court, anything you say, will be taken very seriously. And then perhaps, there might be an agenda item where we could address some of the comments that were presented during this time. At any rate, it's your turn now. We're happy to hear from you.
My name is Lawrence Furkin. I live at 36 County Road 50, Robstown, Texas. I've resided at this residence since 1979 for 43 years. And these problems have been there for well over 50 years. First, I would like to discuss road conditions on County Road 50 and other roads in my area. When 52 first opened to 69, it provided no access to former Road 1889, which greatly affected the road I live on, County Road 50. When the Nuasis County Co-op relocated their business from Robstown to County Road 52, there was no access to former Road 1889. This resulted in heavy traffic rerouting onto County Road 50 from NEC and other traffic coming from Highway 77. This went on until the road was completed, providing full access to FM 1889. I'm still getting heavy truck traffic from soil removal for the construction of NEC retention pond from Spur Lane to County Road 50. This truck traffic has caused many deep ruts that also resulted in potholes and breaking up of the road edges. County Roads 52, 69, 48 have been re-based and resurfaced twice, yet County Road 50 remains with only occasional poor pothole repairs which deteriorate quickly. Second, I would like to discuss the lack of maintenance in the drainage ditches where I live. Current drainage problems which I wish to discuss are located on former Road 1889, County Roads 52, 52B, where they all drain into the west ditch on County Road 69. The largest problem is the drainage ditch on County Road 69, starting at the Robstown city limit. This ditch before the palm tree form passes under 69, heading east for several hundred feet, and then it goes south to County Road 44 ditch onto the also drainage. This ditch is being met also from 1889, has not been maintained for over 43 years, and is choked up with trees, trashed trees, and general overgrowth. There is no maintenance on this ditch on the east-west side of former Road 1889. This causes the water to drain across from the lakes into Siesta Loop residential area at County Road 52B. This includes flooding across the road at Memorial Cemetery onto former Road 1889 as well. It has nowhere to drain, causing traffic problems as well. Siesta Loop has been partially dug out to relieve flooding also, but the water still continues to drain from 1889, County Roads 52, 52B, and onto 69. Note, the only ditch on 69 is located on the west side. Once this water gets to Robstown city limit where the ditches are not poorly maintained, good drainage is impossible. It continues to back up and flooding east and west residents of business on FM 1889 as well. In closing, I've been here for several years with the same complaint. I've met with different people who offer no solution, yet I don't see any chances. I don't need an engineer to resolve these problems. This is just a matter of good maintenance of the drainage ditches to ensure the water doesn't back up and continue to flood the area and decent road repair to substantiate heavy truck traffic. I've done my part, and I have been, I have photographed and given the areas of concern with your representatives, Barbara Canales and Melissa Mungia. Garrett Nelson being the last one, I spent extensive time showing him the problems. And I know Melissa Mungia was moved up in Emergency Management, and Gelson Garrett, Garrett Nelson took her place temporarily from Lubbock. And he's given you all the information about these ditches, and I haven't heard anything back from anybody. I can't dig out these ditches, so I need your help to step up. And who's going to take care of these problems that's been continued for way over 43 years? I think it's time somebody take care of this problem ditch that's backing everybody up. And that's that section. If you look over there on the diagram that I've showed you, in the problem ditch is where it's at, on the first page, where it starts right before 46, comes across to 69, and then finally cuts over to 44. This ditch is just plumb full of trees, overgrowth, and trash. And I've got on the pictures after that. The first picture shows on County Road 69, the change in color is the pavement is on the south side of Robstown in the city limits. And as you can tell, it's pretty well groomed by the county before that. But when it gets to Robstown city limit, all the grass and the trees growth on the left is where the city limit begins. Next page is, you can tell, there's the sign, Robstown City Limits. It's showing where the city limits is going north to 48 and County Road 50. So the change in the road color, you can plainly see and the sign where the Robstown city limits begin and the trash and the debris. You go to the next page, it shows you right where it begins, looking the other direction. This is where Robstown city limits begins on County Road 69, a ditch and old tires and trees and grass and overgrowth. Going to the next page, same thing. County Road 69, city limits, ditch on the right, full of grass, trees, and people dumping. I'll go to the next page.
Can I just interrupt-
Matrices.
Sir, just one second. Really, the public, County Works needs to be hearing all this stuff, too.
I-
Could we go find the Public Works Director? Because I don't know why this went to Emergency Management, but this needs to be in the Public Works Department somewhere, right?
But one of you listening, would you come up, please?
I don't mean to, I don't want to respond, but I want to get the right person here, sir, to hear this, so.
Right, I was about to say that, let me let you finish, and then-
Go ahead, but I just sent someone to get the Public Works Director, because that's who we-
Okay, well, I can wait till they get here. All we've got is time.
Well, it's okay. He's gonna, you're gonna need to talk to him offline anyway, but you can keep presenting to us. I'm sorry for interrupting you.
Well, then I'll go to the next page. County Roads, the city limits again, more trees, overgrowth, plugging up of the drainage system, causing the flooding on all the roads, 48, 50, 52, 52B, and Siesta Loop, and residents and business of 1889. And also the new housing that is close to the Nuasis Boulevard. Everything from 624 has to go back to 69. There is no way for it to go uphill to 624. So we're stuck with this problem. And here it is, we're crosses across 69, still in Robstown city limits, crosses underneath the road going east several hundred feet before it turns south again to County Road 44, continuing south on this Road 69. You can run into County Road 44. On the right hand of the street is the County Road 69 and 44 intersection with a high-pressure underground gas pipeline. It's not too far from there, and you would think that they would just have continued on this ditch, but I don't know if the high-pressure gas line, it would prevent them from digging it that way and going underneath and making a straight shot instead of having this, all this debris on this L shape that's been there for ages. But still, it doesn't neglect the drainage from 1889 that comes all the way to 69 again through a ditch that's full of trees as well. So the next page basically shows the east side of the ditch and all the debris on it. And I believe the next page is the other side of the ditch. Yes. And that's looking back toward former Road 1889. So trying to show you both sides of that crossing, that is just full of trees, grass, and debris. And then, of course, that's the other side. The next page is the ditch on the west side, coming from 1889. You see, it's full of trash. And it's consistent. It's all this trash and debris, much less the tree and overgrowth. And we finally, the last one in the pictures of the ditch is looking at it from County Road 44 next to the RV park, which I believe is Reed, the RV park. And you're looking at it from 44 before it crosses. Well, the ditch on 44 is clear, but you can see that it, all the way up to County Road 44, we're still have the same problem, grass, overgrowth, trees, and trash dumping. Next page is where I live, my house, County Road 50. And you can see one of the times that it's backed up, causing flooding in the fills, water going across the road. And then the last page, of course, is looking down the street towards 69, same thing. It's waters flooding the ditches, coming over the road, going into the people's yard. That ditch, that L-shaped ditch, is causing all this backup. There's no way for our water to get out unless that's cleaned out. And everybody's coming and cleaning our ditches right where we're at. That doesn't solve the problem. The downstream problem has been there, and nobody wants to take any attention to it. It's in Robstown city limits. I don't know, you know, who's going to take care of that? That's my question. Who's going to take care of this problem, clean out the ditch, so everybody can have water relief in their ditches and not flood their homes, which is also happening already over at Siesta Loop. They've been flooded for really bad for so many years. They're trying to take care of it. I don't know where they're at on that. I don't know precisely. But it still comes back to the same problem. Their water has to go to County Road 69 and out to the 44 ditch, which is backing up. And those trees and overgrowth and dumping, nothing's ever been taken care of. It's been that way, I'm gonna say, for over 50 years. And I've been here for 43. So I'd like somebody to step up and take care of this problem. I'm tired of hearing all the excuses. It doesn't need an engineer to take care of that. It just needs to be cleaned out. So now, today, I'm asking who's going to take care of that.
So I just, I want you to know that I wish the rules were a little different, but and during public comment, if it's not on the agenda, you get to visit with us, and then we don't get to say anything back. But I have a way that I think we can create a response for you. I could ask for your patience only if you, after we do all of public comment, there's a general information agenda that I think if you'll maybe take a seat, maybe we could address it inside of there, because drainage and flooding are listed in the agenda, Jenny, as part of that. So maybe I could at least create some dialogue or conversation and keep to the rules, if that would be all right with you.
Okay.
It won't, it's literally like the first one after public comment.
Okay. Garrett Nelson had told me there's been 16 million, or 6 million, I'm sorry, allotted for drainage ditches and stuff. I know I'm not the only problem, but I've had this, you know, for over 43 years. And it's a, you know, kind of a small section in compared to maybe somebody else's, but it's backing everybody up. It needs taking care of. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I invite you to stay. I'm going to move on. I have a few, what looks like one, two, three, four, five, six folks, kind of on the same topic, so I'm going to keep you guys together. And I'd call on Betty Sheets next, followed by Ronnie Baker. You'll be after Ms. Sheets. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Thank you and the commissioners for being here.
Good morning.
I'm here today representing the bingo halls. I have a charity. It's called Corpus Christi Voice for Life. We take care of the mothers and babies. If the young girls are trying to abort, we try to save these babies. We've been so successful. This goes back to the abortion days with Bishop Reesied and Rex Moses. It's been that many years we've done this. I ask you today to help us. The bingo halls are not making any money. We haven't had money in almost three years. I don't know how much longer we can go on. I know you all can help, but if you could put some kind of regulations on these game rooms or help us in some way to get our money. We used to have the money coming in, and it really did help us a lot. But we need your help. We really do. I hope you hear us and do something for us to help these girls.
Thank you.
And she's with me. She has a charity.
I'm Peggy Derrun from Kingsville, Texas, and I represent Pitney Education Foundation. We also have a Rotary in Kingsville that gives scholarships, has in the past, given a tremendous amount in scholarships, and we're all being affected. So hopefully we'll just consider us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge and commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am. Margaret Baldwin? I'm sorry, Ronnie. I'd already called you. Sorry, Ronnie. Please, please proceed. Margaret, you'll follow.
Wow, we just keep coming back. Judge, commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
We're back. I'm back because over the last three years, we've repeatedly asked for some type of regulatory process that would regulate or prioritize helping the charities compete against what we consider illegal game rooms. This past meeting, we walked away. I showed a statute, a regulation that came out of Bell County, that did not require either the sheriff or the police chief to be involved. It fell on the fire department. And Judge, I'll go back to some of your correspondence, where we looked at prioritizing permits and making it very onerous to have a game room and not follow certain regulatory requirements. I was looking at the title of the agenda, and I call it kind of a disappointing agenda, because when we left the meeting last time, we were very confident, based on the comments that were made, that some type of regulation would be presented today. I listened to this gentleman, and I listened to Commissioner Chesney, ask for the Public Works to come up and deal with this individual. And I look around, and I don't see Sheriff Hooper. I had a conversation with the county attorney, Ms. Dorsey, several weeks ago, asking, hey, are we on board with the regulation? And she said, yes. She said the sheriff is supposed to be at the meeting on the 26th to present some type of regulation that would create a permitting process to stop the proliferation of what we consider to be unregulated illegal game rooms. And I'm slightly suspect, I have, I had a career in law enforcement, and I've done a few other things, but most recently was brought to my attention, on South Staples, there's a new game room, and there's a four-by-six poster advertising a person that's running for a position here in Corpus Christi, and I find that kind of interesting. I wonder if we looked at who owns the game rooms, because I know that, that based on the newspaper article that came out, they reached out, they got no comment as far as who owns the game rooms, where does the money go, versus charitable bingo, which we know where all the money goes. There's a lady that's going to speak after me, that's going to show you, every single dollar that comes into charitable bingo, both the city and the county get a percentage of. They get nothing from the game rooms. I promise you that, I guess we'll stop coming when all the bingo halls have gone away, but once again, where is Sheriff Hooper? And I'm going to leave you on this. We were at a meeting six months ago, and Sheriff Hooper came to those meetings diligently, voiced concern, and said, and said to everybody in the meeting, I'll tell you what I'll do. I will go out, I will personally investigate and raid one of the game rooms to see what ripple effect that it has. And it never happened. And so my question is, why Sheriff Hooper? And where are you today? I appreciate your time. Please help us save the charities, because as I said to Margaret, I said, I guess I should have brought the National Little League in, who Ms. Dorsey said her kids played baseball for, and come in with 100 kids and say, we get shoes and uniforms from charitable bingo. What do you get from game rooms, guys? Thanks.
Ms. Margaret Baldwin. I wish I had an agenda item where we could address you. I can only tell you because we cannot address you. We're going to, out of respect, let everybody finish, and then I'm going to have somebody from my office come out and just share something with you. Go ahead.
Judge and commissioners, we just ask for accountability across the board. We are asking for regulations, just like the bingo halls are regulated. Yesterday was my deadline to get my quarterly reports done for the state, which also gives information to the county and to the city. And I'm just gonna make it short and give you some figures. I just put in the mail yesterday, a packet that will come to the county for five bingo halls, that they will get $51,625 is their part, which is 25%, and the city will get the same amount. We are making these prize fees, they're not donations, that we have to pay to y'all, yet the charities aren't getting their money. They're not, we are not being able to be accountable to them, to have enough to make distributions to them. We ask that if we are expected to do this and make sure that y'all get the money, we are in the same boat, asking that we have some accountability on y'all's end, that we have some kind of ordinance, some kind of documentation from the game rooms. Let's see what they're doing with their money. The quarterly reports that I present tell you exactly how much is brought in, how much is given out, how much is spent, how much is employees, how much is distributed. There's, we have to balance within $1. We are accountable to y'all, to the state. We ask that the game rooms be accountable in the same manner, so that we can help each one of the charities that we are representative. We represent, I can't even guess how many, that are in Nuasis County. I think there is over 100 of them that we represent at bingo halls. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Kathleen White.
We don't believe she was able to make it.
Okay, no worries. We'll move on. This one is a little harder for me to read, but it looks like Eduardo, or Edward? And you know what? This one doesn't have an item number, so I made an assumption. He was with your group. Eduardo, deputy, would you check? Okay, let me just move on to Nick. Is it Pelosi? Good morning. Good morning, sir.
Judge, Commissioners, I'm Nick Pelosi. I live in Camino de Plata. We've been hearing some of the business of where the money is not being gotten, given to the city and the county, giving you an idea of where it goes for us. I represent the Corpus Christi Council of the Navy League of the United States. In the past couple of years, we would receive approximately ten to fifteen thousand a quarter to distribute. In the past year, two years, we've had five hundred dollars. Where our money goes? We provide the total funding for four high school ROTC programs here in the city. We pay for everything. One of those schools is a national champion drill team. We also provide scholarships to either colleges or trade schools to these students. For the airshow that comes every two years, we provide all the meals for all the volunteers. There's Senior Sailor of the Year program, Sailor of the Quarter. Getting this would give points towards the promotion of the enlisted. We would pick up the bill for the plaques, for the meals, for the ceremony. This has been discontinued because the Navy can't afford it either. We provide tickets for the junior enlisted to the Marine Corps and Navy birthday parties. These are given to the junior enlisted who normally cannot afford a full dress military dinner dance. We got tickets quick, no questions asked. You just say to your chief or your gunnery sergeant, I need a ticket, and we just give it to them. We also support the MWR, which is Morale, Welfare and Recreation on the base. Recently, they had a snow festival. They took a ton of ice cubes, fed them through a tree shredder to provide snow for the kids in Corpus Christi. We helped pay for all of that. We have been, with the production of money, we've been either cutting back severely, we've been living on our reserves, and our checkbook is getting thin. Without your help, we're going to have to discontinue, if not severely reduce every one of these programs. Thank you.
Thank you. I see nobody online with an iconic hand up, but I will do a double check for public comments. Connie, I see nobody. Deputy, do we have anybody out there? I'll call once more for Eduardo, and I do apologize. I just, it looks like, it looks like my signature.
He's an agenda item. Is that you, Eddie?
Is that me?
Oh, my gosh. You have a, you have a signature like, like a doctor.
No, I don't.
It is. It's Eddie Canales. Thank you, Judge, Commissioner. Yeah, I'm sorry, but you're going to make a full presentation, so you don't have to sign up on public comment. Okay. But thank you. That's what it is. I just didn't recognize. And I should. It's my same last name, right?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is, is allow the opportunity for two things to happen. One is a quick opportunity for, for us to talk about general information, which does include flooding and drainage, and it's actually listed on the agenda. So what I'm going to do is do the quick exception of the minutes, and give me just a moment to come back to resolutions and proclamations, everybody. But I will take H1 right this moment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
Yes? Do I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you.
Motion, second.
Okay, who did the motion?
I thought I heard a motion.
All right, I'll take it. I'll do the motion. A second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. And Commissioner Gonzalez?
Judge, could I just?
So that I might.
Do a public comment real quick? Can I do that real quick?
Yeah, I can sign you up.
Throw something in there.
Is it on a agenda?
No, it's just, I can't respond to them, but I wanted to make public comment.
I know. That's where I was trying to figure out how we could do that. I'd like to be able to get there.
I was just going to say in public comment, I was just going to say in public comment that it might be a good idea for us to place this on the agenda for the second meeting in February and ask the sheriff to be here to make a presentation and with, in regards to the game room ordinance. And because we, we need to do, we need to make some sort of effort, something on this. And I know all the game room people are going to show up too. So to give everybody an opportunity to really sit down and figure out what the ordinance is or what it isn't, we just need to, in my opinion, just need to kind of vote one way or the other.
You're really just making, you're not really addressing them. You're just really telling us.
No, I'm talking to you. I'm just saying, I'd like to, right, I'd just like to put it on the agenda. I'm just asking that it be put on the agenda.
Motion or?
No, I'm just asking it be put on the agenda for February twenty-sixth.
I agree. I mean, I agree with you.
With the sheriff being here to present whatever his recommended ordinance, or if he doesn't recommend, that's fine too, just whatever the recommendation is.
Call this item so I can go tell them that we're going to do that. Call this one right here. I'm going to pass the gavel for just five seconds. Not five seconds, but yeah, it's probably five seconds. No, Commissioner Gonzalez is going to announce our next agenda item, which will be our general information to get my EM team ready. I'll be right back. Just one minute.
So we go into general information reports. Number one, discuss disaster preparedness and response, including matters related to COVID-19, emergency orders, severe weather, flooding, drainage, economic recovery, state and federal assistance, American Rescue Plan Act, ORPA, emergency rental assistance program, and infrastructure status and other related matters. And I guess to do the report is Mr., I keep forgetting your name.
Louis Ray. Louis Ray.
Louis Ray?
Louis Ray.
Louis Ray. Okay.
So we would like to discuss the drainage first with Juan. He wanted to go. Oh, can you guys hear me? I'm sorry.
You can adjust the microphone a little bit.
So we would like to discuss the drainage portion first, Commissioner, and then we'll come back with the disaster preparedness and COVID.
All right.
Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning, Juan.
The question, I know, Mr. Lawrence, right? Yes, Mr. Lawrence, I know that his area is within the city of Robstown, the drainage, that L-shaped ditch. In regards to the county going into the city of Robstown, Public Works can't go in there and do any clean out of the ditches. We can't maintain those ditches. Those need to be done by the city of Robstown. And I'd be gladly to meet with Mr. Lawrence regarding his area or any of his areas that he knows of, and we need to go in there and do any type of cleaning or mowing. I'll be happy to meet with him after this, after this session and discuss with them to be able to take care of that.
You know what? I know that most of it is in Robstown, not, not so much in West County.
It's in Robstown.
You see the clean area, then you see Robstown.
Yes, sir.
But I, I'm just thinking, if the recommendation may be, you know, Commissioners Hernandez or Commissioner Maldes can maybe do a partnership with Robstown, and maybe the Drainage District Number Two.
Yes, sir.
You know, since they're, I don't know, I don't know if those ditches belong to them or not, but it could be a partnership where actually we can clean some of that stuff.
I'd be more than willing to go in there and help out, seeing that Robstown has a little difficulty.
You'd like to be in a local, inter-local agreement, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And Commissioners, one thing that I just want to bring up is that this is a reminder that the equipment that we're requesting is for these purposes and for cleaning out ditches. And hopefully, I know I got an email earlier that we probably have to go for bids for that, I think. So hopefully, we don't have to. So we can get those pieces of equipment ASAP.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Those have been approved though, wasn't right?
Yes, but I just got an email from, I guess from Hagerty saying that, I guess, we have to go through the, some procurement process. So I'll go with Michael, and I sent an email to Michael regarding that.
See, we can do it expedite it to Michael.
Yes, sir.
Juan, and Jerry Garcia still involved with you?
Yes, sir.
Helping out, right?
Yes, sir.
I know he's very knowledgeable in that area.
Yes, sir. He'll be involved.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So I wanted to address the last week's winter storm. We stood up the EOC for, partial EOC for the county. We had everybody in place and ready to execute if we needed to be.
I can barely hear you, Louis.
We had everyone in place, and we was ready to execute if needed for the last winter storm of last week. We stood up RMB, Richard and Borcher for Warmess Center, and it was a great team up with Robstown. I'm going to call Kathy up to give you, give you guys the COVID information.
Good morning, Commissioners. If you would put the PowerPoint up. I have brought to you a PowerPoint that is a combination of the Health Department as well as Nuasis County Office of Emergency Management to report on COVID for the region as well as the testing. Second slide, please. Nuasis County has identified twenty-five confirmed Omicron cases in our community. The first one was identified December fourteenth, and we are continuing to offer vaccines and boosters, and I have some supporting facts of how that is going very well. The Omicron is more contagious than Delta. There is also, so that you're aware, there's a B variant that's showing up in certain areas in Europe at this point in time. It's not come to the United States yet. As of January twentieth, we had a thousand five hundred and eighty-one positive cases confirmed here in Nuasis County. And this shows you the trend. December twenty-first, we had sixty-five cases as a daily average for COVID. As of January, we have eight hundred and twenty-four cases as a daily average. So Omicron is here, and we do believe that we are currently close to the peak, and we anticipate that we'll continue testing. However, our resources are going to be limited. Next slide, please. Okay, this shows just a really quick overview of the total number of cases of COVID, and you can see this is the highest number of cases that we've had since the beginning of COVID. Next slide, please. This is, this slide shows you a breakdown of the Janu-, just the January cases. And as you can see, we have a large percentage in children, zero to nineteen. Our Driscoll Children Hospital has been inundated with care and treatment of COVID children. And many of those are under age for getting any type of vaccine at this time. Next slide, please. You can also see this trend here. Come January third, the tenth, and then you can see just a little bit of a downfall in the weekly cases. So as we had previously predicted in December, we did have our, our expansion of COVID in January, and that was what we thought our peak was going to be. Next slide, please. And this is a daily trend of the hospitalizations. Next slide. There we go. No, we've skipped one.
Back and forth.
Maybe I skipped one. Sorry, Connie. Oh, yes. Here's the COVID deaths. As you can see, we have, this Omicron is not affecting our severely. We're not having the number of deaths that we had with Delta in the original COVID virus. So while it is more contagious, we've done a better job with the vaccines and the situational awareness of wearing masks and, and the six feet separation, we've, and continuing to wash our hands has helped us keep this number low. But a lot of it is attributed to vaccines because the symptoms, while they're great in some people, they're lesser in others. Next slide, please. Here's the hospitalizations. However, you have, you can see here, there's a trend of increasing of hospitalizations in ICU just since the end of December. And we're at a current rate of a hundred and ninety-nine hospitalized with COVID. And we have had also hospitals opening wings for ICU. So we've had an expansion of our ICU in this region to take care of patients regionally. Next slide, please. Here, it shows that we have had a number of, the increase in our vaccinations has continued to go up. So this is a very good number. Next, and this shows the boosters. You know, we're at thirty thousand boosters. So that's, that continues to increase, which is providing some additional protection to our citizens. So we do request that they continue to do so. Next slide, please. This slide does show where our vaccination rates are improving. Our residents fifty, sixty-five and older are increasing, as well as ages sixteen and over. All of these numbers have increased. So we're doing well, especially the sixty-five and older, which tends to be, have the hardest time of recovery when they do get COVID. So it shows that we are getting our message out and doing a good job of that. Next slide, please. Okay, sorry, this is a little bit small for those in the audience, but Commissioners, if you'll take a look at these numbers, it does show where we had in December, early December of twenty-twenty-one, we were only testing about twenty people a day. And then you see where we had the surge December twenty-seventh through December thirtieth. And this was during the time period when the city of Corpus Christi was closed. So our section chief of operations, Edward Herrera, did a fabulous job of pulling out all the stops. And in a, in a short period of time, we did a thousand six hundred and thirty-eight tests. And it was, it had a thirty-three percent positivity rate. And then in two days after that, we had another thousand seven hundred and eighty tests. And you see here where the increase in positivity rate was forty-three percent. We've also done some independent testing in Robstown. And if you drop down to see January fifteenth, you can see a jump in the positivity rate to be fifty-five point three percent. So you're having, out of those, and what that really means is of all the people you've tested, over half of them are COVID positive. And that shows a trend of what you're seeing in your population. And this isn't even what I would say totally accurate, because think of how many people that you have that are taking the at-home COVID tests that aren't even reporting their results. So there's a lot more positives out there than what we're seeing. And if you jump to January nineteenth, you're looking at a forty-nine point one percent positivity rate. You do start seeing a trend here on the nineteenth of our numbers are going down is the number of people that are appearing for testing. But if you look on the right-hand side, Port Aransas, we did a, a testing last week. We did testing in Port Aransas, and it had, we only did a hundred and twenty-seven tests there, which was a good number, and it had forty-one percent positivity rate, which makes our health department believe that perhaps Port A is a little behind the peak. So we may see some increases. We're doing a, we're scheduling a additional testing in Port A on Friday. So we're going to wait and see what the positivity rate looks like on Friday. And here, if you look on January twenty-second, we have a fifty-nine point five percent positivity rate. That's a sixty percent positivity rate. So while our testing numbers are going down, our positivity rate is going up. So everybody needs to be diligent in, when they're out in public. And as you see down here on January twenty-fifth, which was yesterday, we, at Memorial, we had three hundred and seven people appear for testing, which to me shows a very significance that we are getting close to our peak, because you can tell by the testing numbers. And however, just so everyone is aware, our resources for testing have become limited, because these large number of tests that we're doing at this time, it's, it's Because these large number of tests that we're doing at this time, it's causing issues with getting supplies. It's... it's... these tests are very high cost. So it's very... while we're taking care of our community and meeting the needs and keeping COVID at bay and keeping it on the run, because all of this is needed for awareness so that these people that test positive can quarantine so that we can reduce the spread of COVID. And that's the key. So we just have to be very diligent moving forward as the resources. Because you have to imagine the entire United States and the world are all wanting these same supplies and these same tests because they're having issues across the United States at this time. Next slide. This is just a quick overview of what this week's testing schedule is. We're doing Monday through Saturday at the Memorial... Chris Spahn Memorial Hospital. And then Friday, as previously mentioned, 10 to 3, we are having testing at Port Aransas. Today, we have testing at Richard and Orchard Fairgrounds. It is from 9:00 AM today to 5:00 PM. And a special thanks to Spectra, who is providing us access to some indoor space there at no cost because they know how tight our budgets are right now, and they're trying to help us out. So their team is working with us to provide additional support and additional cover. Because out there in Robstown, those winds get high this time of year. So it's really hard for them to test outside. So it's passing by the Exhibit Hall B, and they're doing the testing in the car, as they have been at all testing sites. So this is a special thanks to Spectra, as they were also very supportive during our mass... mass care on this past week. They were very elementary in helping us with that. An Amistad Community Center does Robstown and here in the... and this is a weekly thing that they do. Every Tuesday and Thursday, Amistad tests at their locations. So if you are an Amistad patient or not an Amistad patient, you can always call there and get a test taken. And they... it's a drive-through test. You make an appointment and they come out to your car. Next slide, please. This is just an overview of what you... the criteria for CDC is for COVID testing and exposure. That has changed a little bit over time. Next. We are still waiting to receive the monoclonal antibodies. We've not received any at the Health Department. We had 500 ordered. And we've also placed an additional order to the state for a STAR request for another 500. And neither of those orders have been received. This is... this drug is very hard to come by. Next. This is an overview of the COVID vaccination clinics. We still have them at La Pemera Mall. It's probably our highest number of vaccines on a weekly and daily basis. It's easy access and provides great care. So a special thanks to a joint operation with the military, the Nuasis County, as well as Corpus Christi Nuasis County Public Health District on La Pemera. Next slide, please. These are outdoor COVID clinics. This is in QSR Legacy, the Fallis parking lot, and the Goodwill store. And those are in underserved communities. So those are very important for people to know. Those... you can walk up or drive up to those. Thank you. Next slide, please. And here are some schools for you... those of you who have schoolchildren. You know, make sure to fill out those forms and give your approval for vaccines because they'll have those clinics at these following schools. Thank you. Next slide. And the last and final message that we have for you, please continue in combination with getting vaccines. Wear your mask in concrete settings. Keep your home and offices well-ventilated. Stay at home if you are sick, any kind of sick. Please stay home. Because it's very hard to tell on Omicron what your symptoms are. If it's a cold, if it's a sinus infection. So until you're tested, it's very hard to diagnose Omicron. Please get tested as soon as possible if you believe you have COVID. Wash your hands often. And we recommend if you have not been vaccinated, please do think about it. And as you see, we have lots of opportunities for vaccination. Do I have any questions? Yes, sir.
Okay. Tell us all about this being vaccinated and Terry and I have been vaccinated and... but to get...
He can't hear you if you don't have one.
Okay, sorry. All these places to go and get tested. And we've signed up through the internet to get some test kits ourselves. But what does it take? And evidently, we can't go to our general practitioner because they don't want to see you. So where do you go after you've tested positive?
We have Nuasis County and the Public Health District Support Amistad COVID Clinic. And the COVID clinic can see you. You call the COVID clinic number. I can give that to you, sir. I don't have it readily available.
I think it's 361-826... is it 8019?
I believe so.
I think that's in my head.
I believe so. Call that number, and they will make you an appointment to get care and treatment for COVID. And they do it via phone, via phone call. So therefore, you don't have to go in. They can call you in if they need some additional work done. Amistad COVID Clinic can also provide at-home labs drawn. They can also, if they deem that you need a chest X-ray or an X-ray of some sort, they can have a portable X-ray company come out and give you a portable X-ray. And this is all supported by Nuasis County.
And that was the correct number. It's 361, for those of you listening, 826-8019. That was the right number. And it's all free. And that is a really good resource for lab, for medical... these are the folks that really have seen COVID since the beginning, these healthcare professionals.
And those people decide whether if you go into the hospital or not?
That's correct. That's correct.
And what are more of the symptoms other than being tested... that you test positive? At what limit, you know, of your health do you go into the hospital?
We recommend that you get an O2 stat monitor. And you put that on your finger and look at your O2 stat rates. That's the key thing to... you need to really make sure that those O2 stat rates stay above 92. But not... with that being said, when you get care and treatment, there are other things that you can do for... that the doctors like at Amistad can do for you to keep you at home rather than put you in the hospital at that point, even if your O2 stats drop. Don't think that you immediately have to go to the hospital. But if you're not getting any care and treatment from a physician and your O2 stats drop below 92, then you need to call a physician as soon as possible or go to ER.
Yeah, that's what happened to my daughter. She went several times.
Judge, could y'all... was there... but it'd be possible, maybe y'all could talk offline? Because I don't mean to be rude, but there's... we gotta get going. This is kind of normally not how we do it. Would that be okay? I mean, she'll answer anything you want, anywhere you want. She's got a lot of info.
I'm sure she will.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. I don't mean to...
Okay, no worries. It's all good public information anyway. You just have to address it to us, Kathy. That's all.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so look, I'm gonna pivot here because there's some other important pieces inside. You've given us a great slide deck here. And I'm gonna encourage all the Commissioners to share the slide deck in any way that it can be helpful to public messaging. But I'm gonna pivot real quick. Like Maria Bedea is online. She wants to just make one comment about ERAP because something important happened this past week, and we want to make sure the public understands the difference between the county and the city. And that's our Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Maria, will you tell us? And then I'll pivot straight to drainage and flooding. Go ahead.
Yes, so good morning, everybody. I wanted to let you know that obviously a press release went out earlier this week from the City of Corpus Christi that they have closed their Emergency Rental Assistance online application to new applications. They're still processing the ones that have already been submitted. But I want to assure the Commissioners Court that the county's program is still up and running. So residents can still go to nuaciscountee rap.com, and applications will still be accepted. We have already distributed about $600,000 in rental assistance and utility assistance. We have about $229,000 in applications that are currently pending. But that still leaves the county about $800,000 to expend between now and, you know, the next, you know, year or so. Again, it's rental assistance and utility assistance. Our portal is still open. We are still accepting applications. So I wanted to reassure the court that, you know, we still have funds available to distribute to residents outside of the city limits of Corpus Christi.
Yeah, thanks, Maria. I'm gonna try to get us maybe like a little one-pager that you can also send out to your constituency. I think this is really important. I don't want them to confuse the fact that the city's closing their funds with those funds that are available to those living, you know, outside the city jurisdiction. And, okay. So with that, you know, you're getting a comprehensive emergency management overview here. There are so many different emergencies we're reacting to. And flooding and drainage is definitely one of them from the May and the July floods. That is why it's listed here. And although I do think we can have a more comprehensive discussion offline, and I'm gonna encourage that to happen, rest assured that the documents that you brought to us, which I think someone just... no, here they are. I'm gonna ask, just for situational awareness, Louis Ray, just to raise your hand. And Lawrence, you're... Mr. Furkin, yours, I'm gonna hand to him right now. Okay, so he is our... Garrett was our interim emergency manager. Louis has just come on. He is our permanent one, so we now have a permanent emergency manager. And rest assured, all your information and all citizens' information regarding flooding and drainage does... it might start at emergency management, but we do send it to Public Works. And what I would like to announce that emergency management has been doing with the aid of all court members is we've been having these drainage workshops. And we also have a full-blown... and I know you said we don't need engineers, and you're right, for maintenance. But we're doing both. We're both doing the engineering study with the three counties that will help us for extreme weather events for our future and designing the right types of remediated efforts, including detention ponds. But in the short term, one of the things that has resulted from the conversations that we've had with you is that you're gonna see that emergency management has been working with Public Works in order to establish a RFP that will be released very soon for maintenance and operation work. And that's really what's needed. I will say that the photos and particularly the environmental pieces, the old mattresses and the tires, that's something that we think that we could address immediately. And Louis is now shaking his head. And so that means he's on it with Public Works. You may not have known it, but he was standing right to your right earlier. But I will say that you're right. You need both. I think we need both. And that's what our office has been conducting is we've figured out that we've got funds that could be utilized if the court wishes it or wills it in its monumental funds called the American Rescue Plan Act. And those funds could be dedicated in part to a maintenance, a countywide maintenance and operation contract. And that's what we've been working on to establish. But in the short term, my hope is, is that flooding and drainage issues like the ones you've brought up that were identified this summer can be addressed on a real pinpointed effort through Public Works. But on the long haul, what we're... what emergency management... and again, I go back to the flooding because that is the disaster that gives rise to this agenda item. What we're... what we pursue... what we are currently pursuing is a countywide M&amp;O contract to bring to court for hopeful appropriation and authority to say go. That which is in the Robstown city limits. I think Mr. Ray, if you will visit with Mr. Furkin, we can contact that particular drainage district and see if they can also pinpoint that specific resolution for that, what's inside their limits. But I do want to give you some encouragement that not only did we take that afternoon where Garrett went out and visited with you seriously, it's resulted in something really important. It's just there's so many processes to make sure that it's competitively procured and written up correctly. And then we've got to get the court to appropriate the dollars. But I think you've already gone a long way to, I hope, help the court understand that these dollars would be well spent. And again, it's not just that your area. It is countywide, and it is maintenance. It's not engineering. It's just maintenance. It's just vegetation, maintenance, and old junk that are blocking the way for the fluid to flow, in this case, water. And then on top of all of that, even if it were to flow with extreme weather events, we need to engineer ourselves better pathways. So I feel like emergency management is doing both in response to the floods of May and July. But it was your conversation that really took us into a whole different direction. And so with that, that's the best way I can respond legally at this moment. But I'm gonna ask if Louis will visit with you. And I know he was here earlier. But there's obvious things that can be done to remediate future flooding, and that's take out all that old junk. And I think that's a reasonable request, and it needs to be done immediately. But there's a... there is a better and bigger and more improved plan afoot. And it really is gonna happen, I believe.
Excuse me, Judge.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hernandez.
I've gotten together with Public Works.
Yes, sir.
We've made plans within the next few weeks. We're gonna have what we call a tire roundup. And that's to get all the tires out of the ditches and collect tires and take them to the fire yard. And then we got a con... not a contract, but an agreement with a tire company. They're gonna come and haul them off. They're gonna come and haul them off for us. So we're starting with that, sir.
And...
The mattresses?
Well, the mattress won't go to the tire place, but they will go be picked up.
We're way off track here, Judge. I don't mean to be rude, but I mean, we're way off track of... this is not on the agenda.
I... I've kept mine in the lane of flooding.
Barely. I mean...
Well, I've kept it in the lane of addressing how the county's addressing the two disasters that we have with flooding. I agree that the tire roundup is off, but I still think it's good.
It's in the same lane. I mean...
I know. I'm just letting you know.
I'm sure to him that it's gonna happen.
I know. I'm just... at any rate, if Mr. Ray, if you would help, that we could move on. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. So with the ERAP, the floods, you're gonna hear more about ARPA and other agenda items. And so, as well as Winter Storm Uri. So I think we'll just move on at this point and go back in time to declaring some of the proclamations that we have. And I'll ask Belinda, we've got one resolution and one certificate of recognition, and let's proceed with those F1 and G1.
So we do have one resolution, and it deals with Vision Zero, which is a multinational road traffic safety project that aims to achieve a highway system with no fatalities or serious injuries involving road traffic. So I'll go forward and read that resolution. Whereas Vision Zero is a strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries, starting with the ethical belief that everyone has the right to move safely in their communities while increasing safe, healthy, equitable mobility for all. And whereas Vision Zero recognizes that traffic deaths are preventable through prioritization of proven safety strategies, multi-departmental collaboration toward the shared goal of Zero, a focus on data-driven decision-making and a systems-based approach. Whereas the county supports the Vision Zero Safe Systems Approach Strategy and is committed to the implementation for the benefit of all Nuasis County, providing for increased safe, health, and equitable mobility for its citizens, commuters, and tourists. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Nuasis declares Nuasis County as a Vision Zero community and reaffirms its commitment to save lives and decrease roadway and waterway accidents.
I'm moved.
Motion in a second. All those... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. There's more to that Vision Zero. I just want you to know, the MPO, Texas, the City of Corpus Christi, we're all in this motion of really working towards these public safety transportation initiatives. And maybe later in time, we'll have a much more comprehensive presentation from, from the MPO. But all those in favor, we've already done that, so thank you for that. Let's do the recognition. At this time, we have also, I believe Angela Luna was here to make some comments, but it's in recognition of, Angela, was yours in recognition, I'm sorry, were your comments on G1?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning.
Commissioners. I'm just here to recognize Ruth Dominguez. I recently went back to school at Sam Houston State University, which is one of the largest and most prestigious criminal justice program, to assist with my career in juvenile justice with victims in the Juvenile Justice Center. So I achieved my Master's of Science in Victim Service Management, and it's the only Master's program in the nation right now that is solely addressed for victim services. I would have never been able to do this without the help from the county in the tuition assistance program. So I thank you for that. But most importantly, I went back in January 2020, right before the world went crazy. And to go back to college is already crazy enough, but to do it in that time is, is a big struggle. And I would have never been able to do it without Ruth Dominguez. Not only was she so accountable for my grades, because you are, you are given your money back based on your grade points, not only was she so accountable, I was so worried not to get an A for Ruth, but she was also encouraging and calm and just that basic support. So basically, I got a Master's in how to be an advocate. And I have to say that I could truly recognize that Ruth Dominguez is such an advocate for her employees here at Nuasis County, and I wanted to thank her for that. Now, when you graduate, there's a stole of gratitude, and the tradition is, is that you wear this stole and you cross the stage with it. And then you present that to somebody who has assisted you in that graduation. And that's what I wanna do today. I wanna present my stole of gratitude to Ruth Dominguez, and it does come with a certificate.
How wonderful.
Thank you.
Ruth?
Yes.
If you let me, I'd like to read the certificate.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Let it, let it be known that Ruth Dominguez, during the course of my study, bestowed the support and understanding without which my graduation would not have been possible. This certificate is hereby conferred to honor and recognize the confidence, guidance, wisdom, and assistance freely given, helping me to attain this important milestone in my life. I thank you from my heart, Angela.
Angela, thank you so much for recognizing one of our own, Ruth Dominguez. Ruth, thanks for doing your job above and beyond, and it really shows what an impact you can make on somebody's life. Would you like to make a few comments?
I just wanna say thank you for recognizing, you know, something, it's, it's a great joy to, to help these students. In this last fall, we had eight participants, and it was, it was like one of our biggest, you know, semesters. And right now for this upcoming spring, we already have six so far enrolled. So it's just kinda, you know, especially in juvenile, they're really signing up there, and everybody's getting their Masters. So it's a great program, a great benefit that the county offers, and it was always a pleasure to talk to Angela. You know, she was going through a lot, and our conversations, you know, just making sure she got all her paperwork in and everything, but I know she worked really hard. But thank you.
Thank you, both of you ladies. And we were just commenting about a week ago how important it is to restore our Employee of the Month program. And it goes without saying that although it's not official with my certificate, it's very clear, Ruth, that you are the January 2022 Employee of the Month. Thank you so much, both of you ladies. Thank you to HR for bringing this agenda item forward. No action, just a lot of good praise and feel-good about that. We'll move on to board appointments, and if you'll take a look, there are quite a few. And the first in your notebook is J1, and that's the Animal Services Advisory Committee. I'll refer to Belinda so that she could let us know who is available for reappointment or who is available for appointment, and then we'll make our motions. Go ahead.
So the vacancy y'all had for Animal Services was the veterinary position, and we finally got a vet to apply. So for, they, we offer Dr. Barbara Lynn Whitlock, who, who applied for this position.
All right, I'll make the motion. Okay, go ahead, Brent.
That's okay.
All right, he'll take the second. We're so grateful to Dr. Whitlock for this opportunity for her to serve. We've been waiting a while for a veterinarian, and this is really gonna make a major difference. If there's any, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And item number two, we've got the Beach Management Advisory Committee. Scott Cross was here earlier, but go ahead.
So you, you had a, three positions that were coming to a close at the end of December of last year and one vacancy. You did receive three of your, I guess, letters of intent to, to be reappointed, which is Gabby Hilpold, LJ Francis, and Frederick Dotz. And then you had the one vacancy that was previously held by Tara Gillespie. In addition to those requests for reappointment, you also received applications from Shelley Witcher, Don Bissel, and Floris Tissot.
Judge, I would nominate Shelley Witcher. She is, has been on before, and somehow it, there was a description on there, but she is also from Port Aransas, and we have, I don't think we have any representation from Port Aransas, so.
Only one opening.
Yeah, but there's, and there's three really good applicants, but I, we really need some Port Aransas representative, representation on this, too, and that would be my nomination. And I think there could be others, so if you could hold these to other two, because there might be another vacancy coming soon.
Could you take the motion and then go ahead and include those that have submitted
I, I would move, yeah, I would. I would move reappointment, the appointment of Shelley Witcher.
So it'll be for LJ Francis? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, the, the reappointments would be Gabrielle Hilpold, LJ Francis, and Frederick Dotz.
And then I would make the motion to reappoint those, and then to appoint Shelley Witcher. And please hold those other two that we haven't, we didn't have any for a while, so I'm glad we actually have some more, and I think there might be another vacancy coming.
And Commissioner Chesney, I'm gonna second that, but I also wanted to say, maybe we could pursue this. At the time that LJ served, he was not a county employee. He's now one of our county employees as an engineer. He might be willing to yield, given that he has a different role.
I, I love him being on there, Judge, as an engineer. So I mean, I love him as an engineer.
Well, that's true, too. I just wanna make sure that, that he's, I guess he still has the letter of interest.
Can we, can we utilize him, though, in an ex-official capacity? I mean, the level that he is in the engineering department, to me, commands that he be an intricate part of this committee. So I think we would still have him and, and all the, the service that he does. I mean, I know he's in some really high priority, publicized positions that complement being on Beach Management, but we could get somebody else to be appointed in there and still use him as an employee.
Right.
I, I hate to bump him out, but I think if we let, you know, acknowledge to him, look, it's not bumping you out, it's, we wanna continue to use you, but by the way, we're gonna have you here where you don't have to worry about an appointment or a reappointment, and let's, and let's continue to use you.
I, I would, I would think that makes more sense. I'm just not comfortable with doing that as a commissioner to the vice chairman of the committee.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you this, I'm not comfortable putting a staff member in a position like that. He, he, his position, his knowledge, his expertise is gonna be.
I don't wanna kick somebody off.
Can I finish?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Sorry, my apologies.
Please go ahead.
My apologies.
Please go ahead.
I'm just saying, I have an issue with any staff member who has a position of authority and responsibility as LJ does. This is not about LJ. Like I said, I want to keep him. The positions that he is appointed to on the regional and state level are phenomenal. We, we have a home run by having him as an employee. I'm saying, let's put him in a position that he doesn't have to worry about the whims of this court or any future court. And as long as he is in a position with Nuasis County, he will have an influence and a part of Beach Management. That's all I'm saying. I think that that can be done if we make him an ex-official position and then allow us another free position. Wouldn't you like to be able to appoint someone additional from Port Aransas or someone else that has interest, and, and by opening up an extra slot? And then, by the way, we still keep LJ and still will be able to use him. That's, that's all I'm suggesting, that's all I'm saying.
Commissioner, you say there'd be no term, no term limits for LJ then, right?
Right. If he's an ex-official, then he, he's on there as long as he is basically the number two engineer for Nuasis County, which he is right now. So that's why I'm saying, he is at such a high position with us, he's already gonna be doing work by nature. The work that he does for us as a county, he's already gonna be doing that. So it's almost kinda double-dipping, so why, why do we need to worry about that, mess it up, muddle, muddle it up? Let's let him be there as long as he wants, as long as he's an employee, he, he's gonna be in that position with us. That's all I'm saying.
And, and it's a good point, and I think it could be accomplished in, in a different way, because at this point, he is the only engineer on this committee that is a vital role. Having a voting member as an engineer is a vital role. We don't have an alternate as an engineer. There will be a, there will be, I believe, very soon, an open spot to put this, another one of these people in there of, one of the committee members who is currently not showing up. And so I'm just asking that we move forward with how it is. He, he's the only engineer we have on this committee that is a vital role on the committee. We have quorum problems sometimes with this committee. We've had quorum problems. He will definitely not be a quorum problem. So I'm just saying, I would like to keep it this way for now. I believe there will be possibly as soon as the next meeting, whenever that's taken care of, because it's, there is, there's an opportunity for a vacancy that will be coming up, not the next one, that's next week, but very soon, and we will be able to put one of these other very talented people in there. So I really wanna keep an engineer on this committee, and I think having someone on staff that has to, that has to go, and we don't, that we know will show up, and we know is a quality, is also a very positive thing. So I, I would really, I really think it's a mistake to take an engineer off the BMAC when we don't have.
It's not a mistake to take him off. He would be there in a non-voting role advisory. And, and I just, I'll tell you, like I said, I have an issue with anyone who, who is on a county employee who serves at a high level that, that then goes into an advisory position for us in any appointment. I, I have a philosophical.
That's fair.
Issue with that, that's a concern. I think that there's chain of command and influence as far as who our employees are and how, you know, how those, those decisions can come independently. I think that there's an issue with that. But once again, this is not about LJ. He is in a tremendous role with the state that we cannot let go. I'm just saying, hey, let's try to open up the process and bring in more people. But, but I've, I've said enough, I've shared my concerns, I'm not gonna stand in the way of it, but I think that this is something we need to look at in the future, because I think this sets a bad precedent.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering.
What we could do is maybe put that forward as a policy going forward, because at this time, we don't have that as a policy.
I, I agree. I agree. Like I said, I don't wanna stand in the way of LJ, and I don't want him to think, I don't appreciate him, because his resume is impeccable. So I know he does.
I was just wondering if Scott, here he is. Scott Cross is here, and.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me chime in here. I just, I, I actually agree 100% with Commissioner Mattis. That's always been an issue for me with any board that we have where we have employees sitting on. The county attorney has, has rendered their opinion that it's, it's okay, but I do agree with where Mattis is. My thing is, is that with this BMAC board, we have struggled so hard with current members, LJ being one of them, about making these meetings a priority. And I have told Megan, I said, we are cracking down hard on the attendance policy that's in the bylaws. You missed three consecutive meetings, and we can come to this court and we can recommend, without your approval, that you get removed, because the work that we're doing on these permits is extremely important, important. It's legally binding as well, once we execute that. And the fact that, that there, this, this court was led to believe years ago, when doom permitting fell under Public Works, that you had to have an engineer. You're not required to have an engineer, there's nothing in the Texas Natural Resource Code or the Beach and Dune Rules that say you have to have it. Just wanna set that record straight right there. There is no other doom permitting faction up and down the Texas coast where they have a PE that's vetting the, the applications. We have to follow strict state guidelines under the Texas Natural Resource Code. The general land office is not gonna let us deviate out of that lane with these members if it doesn't comply with the Natural Resources Code. So my, my big takeaway here is, they've gotta start making the meetings, and it's gotta be a priority. If we're gonna have a county employee on there and they have a conflict with their department, then their, their department's gonna have to say, you know what, nope, this BMAC meeting supersedes whatever I was gonna task you to do. We've gotta get these quorums, because we've been missing too many. And when you have to stand in front of a multimillion-dollar developer with an application, and you have to say, sorry, we gotta postpone the meeting because we don't have a quorum, that's embarrassing as hell, and it's happened several times.
I was gonna suggest, in order, A, to move on for efficiency and also to achieve maybe a good goal, is Commissioner Chesney, would you be inclined maybe to, you know, we're, we're meeting literally next week. Could we maybe today revise, consider, I'm gonna ask you just to consider revising to approve BMAC letters of interest for, forgive me, it was Fred Dotz, it was.
Gabby Hilpold.
Gabby Hilpold, the chair.
And then the reappointment.
And then the re, and then, yes. And then could we do a second preference and then ask, or just leave it open on the LJ spot till next week? Scott, you do not have a meeting between now and next week, do you?
No.
He's a holdover anyway, Judge, until we make a decision.
And he's a holdover, that's, that's a good point.
Holdovers can go month to month.
And then what I'd like to do is just have the opportunity to visit again offline.
I'm, I'm fine with that, but I, but I really, I'm fine with that for the purposes of moving on, because, but I, with all due respect to Scott, I think it's important to have an engineer on that committee. You may not, and that's okay, we can disagree. I don't think it's, I didn't say it was a requirement. I think it's extremely important, that's why we put him on there, or why, one of the reasons I put him on there, when we put him on there, was I wanted an engineer on that BMAC committee.
I agree with your value of that.
Right, and that's the value, not a requirement. So I still am gonna have that value next week.
Right.
And, and if any of them are not making meetings, then that needs to be addressed. And I know that's not the only one, and that there's one in, and there's one in particular that was, you know, that needs to be, that needs to be addressed.
Some of them just faded off by, I mean, just rotated off, which solved our problem.
I think I'm gonna ask you guys to work this offline with our court administrator. If somebody has missed three meetings, I would like to go ahead and make that to, you know, so that we have some, just want you to know, the candidates here are uber-qualified.
To move on, Judge, I would amend my motion and hold on the other. I won't, I don't, I will not change my position on it.
I understand.
But to, to be fair to Commissioner Mattis and others, I'm happy to do that, but I would make the motion, then the amended motion to appoint Gabby Hilpold.
Again?
Again, Fred Dotz, and to, to then appoint Shelley Witcher Meyer.
Correct. And then we'll hold on the fourth?
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll be right back with this, Belinda, on next court's agenda on February 2nd. And I'll take that, and I'll second that motion, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next one, Belinda, we'll need to skip, because we didn't have anybody who applied. We did have someone who applied, but they missed it by, missed the deadline, so we're gonna reopen it, is that correct?
That's correct. And so our recommendation would be that we go ahead and authorize the reopening through February 16th. This is for the Spawn Health Board of Trustees.
We missed.
So are we, is that a, I'm sorry, is that a?
Just to table to February 16th. Brent?
Is that a vacant? Is that a vacant?
It's a vacancy due to, uh, term out.
And who's termed out? Tony?
Mr. La Montilla.
Oh, okay. So then we need to, we need to, that's a really, really important, they're all important. That's really, you know, important group to be a part of.
Can you open, can you make a motion to reopen to the 16th?
Motion to reopen till the sixth, or no, the 23rd now because.
I'm so sorry.
Through the 16th and then we adhere it on the 23rd. Yes, I'm sorry.
Right. And we did receive, yeah, okay. Thank you. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Let's do the ESD number three. It's item number four, followed by ESD number six.
So you had, uh, one that was getting ready, that, that expired, which is Carl Hill and he reapplied.
All right. Is there a motion to rea- to reappoint Mr. Carl Hill?
Some, some moved.
All right. Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. And then we also have, um, ESD number six. And we have a letter of resignation there and an application.
That's correct. Susan Crude resigned and so you did receive an application for Mary Brown. I do want to point out that this would be for an unexpired term. Um, so it would just be through the end of this year.
Right. Through December 31st, um, because that's where Susan's position termed out. So is there a motion to approve Ms. Brown?
Come on, second.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. How about we'll continue on to the library advisory board where we also have, uh, some applications.
So, um, uh, you have, uh, the majority of them, you have that, actually all of them that are currently on the board are getting ready to expire in February. And then you have two vacancies that expire at the end of 2023, uh, February. Um, so you did receive, uh, a letter of interest from Josie Arrow, uh, Amy Enriquez, Betty Jean Longoria and Robin Soto. We have not received any letter of interest from Jessica McCombe or Lynn, Lynn Camacho, at least as of yesterday afternoon. And then, uh, you do have those two vacancies. You received one applicant, Tabitha Greenwood. So our recommendation would be to move forward with these, um, uh, reappointments and then also reopen until February 16th.
Yeah. How about the one vacancy? You're going to fill one up and?
Mm-hmm. Move forward with the, with the vacancy of Tabitha Greenwood and your reappointments.
I don't have any, all that in my backup. I'm sorry, so.
It's, it's not, um.
Um, so I don't, you're going to.
It's not in mine, um, as well, but I had a copy, you know, as they sent come to my office. But could you just repeat? So basically, we're going to, um, approve that, uh, application of Ms. Brown and then ask the court to reopen, uh, for the remaining vacancies.
So the, the application of Tabitha Greenwood?
I'm sorry, Greenwood.
And then we also received, uh, a letter of interest for, basically reapplications for Josie Arrow, Amy Enriquez, Betty Jean Longoria and Robin Soto.
Second.
And all, go ahead, Commissioner.
You know, there, there'll be only one vacancy left, right?
There'll be one vacancy left and two positions that are expiring.
Okay. So all those, and any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And now we have, um, Oasis County Mental Health and Intellectual Disability. It's under item seven and we've got one, two, three, four, five letters of intent here.
And those are all reappointments and those were all the positions that were expiring in April, uh, of this year.
And I'll go ahead and, um, announce that it's Buddy Ewing, Linda Falwell Stover, Matt Adler, Rachel Botello, I believe is the chair, and Jane Haas. I've got a motion.
Second.
I've got a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Great. And then the last one is just an announcement. As time passes, people, um, do move on. And so we have, we had three vacancies on the, uh, NCDC. And so I'm calling, I'm just making this announcement that our three new, um, replacements are Ajit David, Claudia Reyes and Tony Dark with an ex officio from Texas A&amp;M University of Dr. Isabel Araysa.
Judges, I don't remember. Is there a limit on that? I mean, that we, is, are there people going off and you're putting them back on?
Yeah. It, it stays at one number.
What's the number?
Fifteen.
Okay.
It stays one number.
Just couldn't remember.
Yeah. And, and I'm sorry, but off the top of my head, I don't remember who they're replacing, but the number is the same. They're vacancies and.
Did people just decide to leave or are you just replacing them? I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not displacing anybody. They just moved on.
Yep.
We just had vacancies. I'll ask Colden to send a memo so you can see what the current board makeup looks like and, you know, where people moved on and off from. And it's, it, it's a two-year posting. Okay. Having said that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, consent agenda. And there are items A through Z, literally the whole alphabet. And I'd ask for a motion at this time or ask that you identify those items that need any clarification or information.
And I just want to point out, the Health District did contact our office this morning.
That's correct.
And asked that you please table item Y.
Y.
To the next court.
So moved.
Uh, motion and I'll sec, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Yeah. Apparently there was something not quite ready in the grant or in the contract. Um, any others? I'll look.
I just, just V and W, and I'm going to ask a lot of.
W?
V and W, just.
All right, W?
Questions today related to the ME's office.
And V.
Right.
Got it. Okay. I, I'm going to ask that we get some info from Michael. So if someone could please text him, because that is a sole source contract. And if not, maybe someone for procurement to jump on the phone to answer your questions.
And we can wait, we can come back to those.
We may have to because I didn't give him heads up.
That's fine. I didn't, well, that's my, that's my fault.
No worries. Um, how about, um, a motion then for the rest, please?
So moved.
Okay. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, hold on, Judge. Do you have one?
Yeah. I just wanted to, I have one to ask, I wanted your clarification on that.
S?
Yes.
Could we pull S, Judge?
I can. I'm just going to ask that the clerk please note for the record that all items but S. Okay? And, um, and then we'll now move to S. And that's, um, approving the amendment to the second emergency COVID-19 supplemental agreement in support of the Rapid Infusion Center with Global Spectrum. And, um, if I could ask, uh, Commissioner Gonzalez for his question.
Yeah. I just, I just want a clarification on that. Uh, what, uh, what do we, what actually are we doing in support of Rapid Infusion Center with Global Spectrum? So they giving us a space? Are we paying for the space or what?
Who wants to take that one?
Um, so, so I believe in September, the court had approved an agreement with, uh, Spectra to provide space for the Rapid Infusion Center, but it had a, a maximum amount payable. And the state who was running the Rapid Infusion Center ended up staying a few extra days than was anticipated. So the additional, uh, amount that went above the maximum amount, amount payable was $14,000. And so this agreement is for that $14,000.
How many days was that, do you know?
It would be for two weeks, basically. For, it would be 14 days.
Do you mean how many total days, Commissioner?
Yeah, two weeks.
Oh, it, no, uh, for this additional amount. But I think in total, it was probably 104 days that they were there.
But this one covers 14.
For the extra days it stayed, there was two weeks.
Correct.
That's 14 days.
Correct.
And it's $14,000, right?
That's correct. I believe it was $1,000 a day, um, as the rent. So to answer your first question, we do pay for that space and, um.
Okay. I just, my question.
Okay.
How much it was and how many days.
All right.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second?
Discussing just real quick.
I'll, sure. Just can I get the second?
Oh, I, sure. I'll second.
Okay. And then go ahead.
I, I just wanted to say that I appreciate this being on the agenda and the, and, um, as you, as you have in the past, given me an, uh, an out of, um, out of, how do I say it? An unusual con, compliment that a meeting or two ago, I'll do the same thing. A- as you know, I've always been very concerned about all of the contracts and amendments that I don't believe should just be signed as an emergency. I appreciate that we have the opportunity to weigh in on this one and I thank you for putting that on the agenda and allowing us to weigh in on this. And I think there would probably be many of those things that if they were put on the agenda, would probably be agreed to by the court because my objection has always been that I didn't think they were emergencies, not that I didn't think that some of them were worthwhile, but just the process. So I appreciate that this is on the agenda and that's my compliment for you for the day. As you did for me, as you were kind enough to do for me. So I am returning that to you.
Thank you so much.
Sincerely.
Thank you so much. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay. Let's, let's see if there's anybody to answer. Oh, yes. Go ahead. Thank you, Cynthia. Um, we're ready for fee, Commissioner Chesney, and W. This is both the forensic pieces of toxicology.
So my questions.
Good morning.
Hello. My, my questions are, um, I'm, I'm going, I'm just going to raise questions on everything related to the ME's office right now.
Okay.
And I'll just leave it at that. So with everything that we are, um, going through or may go through on that, I just want to make sure that this is something that's necessary and why and so that we just, you know, don't run over anything without addressing it. Uh, maybe perfectly okay, but I just wanted a little on the record explanation because that's a sensitive area right now. And if you could do that, I would appreciate it.
Sure. Um, both of these items actually, one of them is the, the first one, TV is, um, with access forensic toxology. And the ME's department utilizes this for the forensic toxology lab. And, um, this is very customary for them to utilize this lab for all forensic, uh, testing that they perform.
When you say all forensic, that means, uh, patholit? I, I'm sorry, I'm not a medical person. I apologize. I'm not, uh, is that? I mean, drug panels and fluids and that's what.
Exactly.
Things of that nature.
Of that nature.
So this is, this is just, uh, and, and it's a sole source. So, um, do we, i- i- when we do sole sources, we don't, is there, why is the reason we don't have to bid those out, I guess?
Um.
Is a question?
The main reason is, um, the sole source meets the, um, purchasing act requirements. And when they are the only, uh, lab department that can offer this type of service, that is why it's considered a sole source.
And you say?
And you, and we do not have to go out for bids. And if you'll notice, uh, there is a letter that was attached from the access forensic that states that there are sole source for those two.
And I understand, but when you say they're the only lab, I, I doubt that means they're the only lab anywhere. I, 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 I think what that means, and I, Michael's not here, but I think what it means is that it meets the procurement requirements, but it doesn't pro, preclude us from going out for bids. But in this case, we've just opted not to because it meets the procurement act in the sole source situation. So I just, again, I'm okay today, right? And I think your explanation is going to be the same on the, on the second one.
Yes, on the second one, on the two W.
You on the spot at all. I'm not trying to, I'm just.
No, that's fine.
I'm okay today, but I think we're going to have to look at some of this stuff as we go through all of the review of the medical examiner's office to make sure that we should be sole sourcing. I just, I'm just kind of foreshadowing here a little bit.
The only thing I want to add is that it was my understanding from last court when this issue was raised, um, that we've always used access, but that due to the fact of increased, um, work due to COVID-19, that for the first time, we went over a particular amount, which was over $50,000. And that is why, um, there was a, if you will, a, a due diligence vetting of the procurement.
Correct.
But the answer to your question is the purchasing act allows for that particular specialty service where in this case, I looked up access. They have a certain accreditations that we need and, um, are able to fulfill that.
And that's a good point, Judge, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah.
But, but does this access then not violate sole source since we've used them?
We've always used them under sole source. That's what I was going to.
Right. But have we used them for more than 50,000, which would preclude us from just sole sourcing?
I'm saying that, so sole source is a, the reason you maybe just didn't see it before is because it was never, it, there's, it was like having multiple categories where it would fit in. So it always went under the radar because it was never over 50. But when it is over 50, then you would look for that actual exception to be highlighted, which in this case is sole source.
So you're, so.
That's what I was.
You're comfortable, Jenny, that, that this doesn't violate anything that we've talked about before in regards to the 50, over the 50,000? Is that what, is it correct?
I believe, yes, that, uh, we did not receive that, but, um, I believe that Michael Robinson, uh, has vetted that and has looked at that specific issue. has vetted that and has looked at that specific issue.
Okay, so, so subject, I would move to pass, subject to county attorney and the purchasing agent verifying that this does not violate us by going over that 50,000 limit, and indeed, this is an exception, as the judge has articulated.
Right. And I would obviously, I would obviously concur. I just want to say that he represented that to this court last court.
No, I just, I agree with Commissioner Chesney here, because there is, I know there's got to be another lab out there besides just this lab, you know, and there's got to be more than one, more than two labs. When he goes, and we, they tell us all the time, and Michael's the one that tells all the time, over 50,000 is the, is the key, you know, that you can't go over that until, if you do, then, you know, and we, and we go back and kind of redo things, because that's the way, what he says. But, and if it's, again, a borderline thing here, and I think that really, we should check to see where the other labs are, you know. I'd like to have, I'd like to have a list of any other labs...
Okay.
That there are, that, that we have gone to, or labs that we can go to, or, and I know there was another lab that they used when they got a second opinion, and this case had just happened. So, you know, I just, you know, what's, what's good for one is good for the other one, you know?
Right. I, I think that we're delving into the specifics.
The key here is the 50,000, right? That's what we're talking about.
The key is, is that the sole source is the exception to the 50,000. That's what I want to distinguish here.
But I don't know, I don't know if it is the exception.
No, it is the exception. Jenny, could you please clarify this? This is important.
Yes, and I know Michael can articulate it better, better than I can, but instead of having to go out to competitive, when you hit that 50 mark, the sole source exception prevents you from needing to do that.
And define the sole source, just one more time?
The sole source is something, like in this case, they have some particular copyrights that others don't hold, or...
Correct.
So...
And, and absolutely. And just to answer your first question, and again, I'm only basing this off what I consider the basics of, of fundamental, just looking up what the definition of something is, but the purpose of a forensic toxicology, that is completely separate and apart from the pathology. The toxicology is to determine what toxins, including drugs, are in the body. And there are only, it's not that there are not other labs, it's that you have to have certain accreditation. That's what was explained to us in court, one court ago, maybe two courts ago, since we had a special. What we'd like to do is, what I'm hearing, is have a narrative be presented to us in writing, so that if anybody asks, we can properly repeat that narrative. But just as, as I say, I'm basing my information on what was relayed here in this court. It was not just sole source, it was sole source for toxicology from the types of accreditation, so that you could use that forensic toxicology in a courtroom for the purpose of evidence. There's very few labs that apparently do all of the different screenings. This is a lab that we have used, it's been vetted many times, but I think it would be a good idea to have that narrative written.
Yeah, in case it does happen, maybe we give us an explanation.
Right.
And if I can add, Michael did communicate, he did just want to make sure it's clear that there's no preclusion due to going over 50, because what goes over 50 is what requires the letter. And so therefore, just as Jenny explained, the sole source is an exception to competitive bidding when you go over 50. So basically, that 50 is where you, you trigger needing the letter.
Right.
And as far as the backup goes, what, what the sole source letter indicates is that access is a whole-case approach and case management portal for Noasis County, and therefore, they're the only ones that would offer this, based on what, what Michael's sole source letter indicates, which indicates you wouldn't be able to go somewhere else to get it.
Okay. So again, subject to verification that it is sole source and that it is an exception and it meets it, then I, my motion is still on the table, so...
Okay, we'll take that as a motion. I think I seconded it.
You did.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The second one is W. It's a different lab, and this has to do with toxicology as well. It's called NMS Labs. Same, same motion?
Yes, I'm sorry, my apologies. Yes.
All right, I'll second that.
Same subject to.
And I'll second it.
Thanks.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, post same sign. All righty. We're going to move into a regular agenda, and we have, direct your attention to item 8.1. And Scott, I do appreciate your, your patience. I'm going to advance yours, if you're okay, after, after Eddie's.
Okay, I'm good.
After Eduardo, those that I did not properly recognize. I do apologize, Mr. Canales. In this case, let me set the stage. For those of you listening online, this is a presentation from the South Texas Human Rights Center. The subject matter is migrant death practices. It's a research project. It considers adopting a resolution and allows, so it's kind of going to be two asks, commissioners, it's adopting the resolution in support of their efforts, and allow the county judge to sign the support letter to the Texas State Institutional Review Board, otherwise known as the IRB. Mr. Canales has presented his information, I'll tell you in advance, to the county attorney. And thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge and commissioners, for the opportunity to give you background information regarding our work at the South Texas Human Rights Center. We've been in existence, we were founded in 2013. And just to give you the context in terms of the question of migrant deaths, when I first arrived in Brooks County, that's about 75 miles from here, an hour, 10 minutes from here, and it was a demonstrative need there in terms of 119, 129 recovered bodies and remains in Brooks County. And it is, it is a consistent problem, crisis, a humanitarian crisis that's taking place. The number of recovered bodies last year was 119 skeletal remains and bodies. And so the work of the center has been in existence since 2019. Brooks County at the time was not complying with state law in terms of taking DNA samples from unidentified bodies and, and submitting those to the proper data banks, which is at that time, you know, and still is, University of North Texas, the National Human Identification Center, and, and, you know, some of the issues regarding NAMAS, which is the national's system, National Missing and Unidentified System in this country. The center, you know, from the get-go, established collaboration with, with the Brooks County Sheriff's Department in terms of our efforts to, to begin trying to, our mission is to try to save lives, mitigate the suffering of people that's taking place out in Brooks County. And it is a situation that is in our backyard, and not very many people know that people are dying on a daily basis and disappearing on a daily basis in Brooks County in relationship to the immigration issue or migration that's taking place from Central America, South America, and, and Mexico. I can tell you now, just recently, this past week, I've been receiving an incredible number of calls of Venezuelans that are coming to the border and, you know, dealing with the issue of, of their asylum and, and also people from Nicaragua. The center, you know, from the get-go, did establish a relationship with the Brooks County Sheriff's Department, and without their assistance, we wouldn't be able to continue our work. We began our water station initiative, which is, you know, I don't know if any of people have gone down to South Texas to the valley and, and seen the blue barrels that are out there on Highway 77 and 281. That's the South Texas Human Rights Center. We provide water, we provide water stations out in the back roads, in ranches, in this, in Brooks County, in and around Brooks County, having a total of maybe 175 to 200 water stations, and we'll continue to establish those water stations. We have a missing migrants hotline, and that's just mentioned to you. On a daily basis or weekly basis, we're getting calls from people from this, you know, that are in this country and from Central America and, and Mexico regarding people going missing. Once people cross the border, they, sometimes they're, of course, they're at the mercy of their guide, the boyeros, the coyotes, as people may call them. And some people are totally unprepared in terms of making it through what they refer to as the desert, the South Texas brush terrain that is extremely harsh and continues to, to take bodies. So our, our missing migrant hotline deals with that on a daily basis in terms of trying to educate people, the process, and assist them. And we assist them in the, in the sense that we have a relationship with Border Patrol in terms of doing some of the very basic information regarding somebody being detained or not being detained. But the most important thing is, we really have established some protocols regarding rescues and recoveries with Border Patrol at the South Texas Human Rights Center. It's called the Missing Migrants Program, and that has, since 2015, Border Patrol thinking out of the box in terms of the relationship, what do they, how do they handle that? Because people are calling and get desperate, and they call the consulate, they call the Sheriff's Department, they call Border Patrol, and in essence, nobody listens. So, yes, sir?
Mr. Canales, and I'm not trying to, I'm trying to figure out why, why we're, what we're being asked to do and why we're, what our involvement would even be and why we're in on this, because I don't, I'm not following the...
Well, I'm just giving you the backdrop. It's, it's about migrant deaths. The, the medical examiner, Noasis County Medical Examiner System receives migrant deaths from Kennedy County by contract, also is receiving bodies from Hidalgo County. And in, in the counties that we serve, the main, the main portion of the counties are Hidalgo, Zapata, Starr, Cameron, and this county here in that regard, and we're, we're studying those migrant death practices. It's a continued research in terms of making, making the protocols and the, and the practices the best that can be developed, and this, we're doing this through the forensic border coalition and this research project. So we're asking for permission from the county commissioners and county judges to participate in this study.
So just to help out a little bit further, you're asking us to allow you to participate in the study by signing a letter of support?
That's correct.
And second, to allow you, upon the medical examiner's, obviously, consent, to allow you access to data? Is that correct?
Not so much data. It's a, there's a focus group, there's an interview, I mean, the, some of this data is, is public access data, you know, so it's basically having conversations with staff and, and the medical examiner here in Brooks County, I mean, here in, in Noasis County to ascertain some of the practices that have been taking place over the last few years.
So it's all voluntary conversations, but you're asking this court to allow the, the, I guess, the practice or in the concept of being able to support this? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we have a letter? Do we have a resolution?
We do have a letter, but Jenny Dorsey would like, excuse me, county attorney wants to address you on this.
And I'd like your opinion, too. I don't...
I think we were going to do it in executive session.
There is an executive item on this as well.
Okay, because I don't understand why we're being asked to do this. I don't get this, because certainly anything right now with the medical examiner, well, hold on, let me just, but the medical examiner, I'm a little nervous, again, I'm just going to say this all day long, having the medical examiner involved in anything right now, until we go through our review, is something I'm not, I don't...
I think, I think we're going to discuss it in executive session, but I do think it's important that, that you tell us exactly what you're asking us, so that when we go talk about it, we know exactly. It's my understanding, you're asking us to sign a letter of support, which is contained in our packet.
No, it's not.
It's not?
Actual letter is not there yet, until we talk.
Until we talk, well, I have it. Okay, but we'll talk about it. But theoretically, there's a letter of support that we'll look at and discuss with our lawyer, and then what else, Mr. Canales?
That's, that's generally it. I mean, we're not trying to, you know, yes, sir, Commissioner, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Just, just in your, in your favor, I, I support this thing 100%. I want you to know that. You guys have been doing work for many, many years in Brooks County, Hidalgo, Jim Wells. You guys have been out there mostly on a volunteer basis, you know, and I really appreciate everything that you guys have committed in helping the migrants that are, almost don't make it, and those that make it, and trying to keep a count of what's going on, so maybe we can get some more monies to help, you know, fight this issue. You know, and, and when I was in the federal government, you guys were already doing this. You were going into the area, into the brush area, and putting water in the brush area to keep people from, from dying of thirst. But, you know, and I think what you, what you, what I see is just all you're asking is for information of how things are done, how things work, you know, and nothing that you haven't done already, you know, with the Border Patrol. And if you, and you work, I know you work hand in hand with Border Patrol, the Sheriff Department of Brooks County mainly. So I think that I commend your, I commend your group for what they've done. So, but I just want to let you know that I, I, I don't have a problem supporting it, because I know you guys...
I thank you for that, Commissioner Gonzalez. Again, we're not seeking proprietary information. We're, we're conducting a research, an IRB is a pro forma, permission form that, that does, you know, certify the fact that this is not any type of rogue research through university, this is through Texas State University, the department, and we, we continue to, to follow all protocols that deals with the privacy and on a volunteer basis. We're not asking anything that, but we're asking the court to support this effort. And, and again, I mean, migrant deaths is something that is in our backyard, is a humanitarian crisis, and very, very few people know what's going on in regards, I mean, I, I don't think anybody knows in this court and knew that 119 bodies and, and remains were, had perished in Brooks County. And so this is something that for us to follow up and, and look, and look at the practices that are taking place and have those conversations with the medical examiner helps.
I'm going to shine the same thing as Commissioner Gonzalez. I appreciate what you all do. I've seen you in the news where y'all are delivering water to the stations. So thank you very much for what you're doing, for caring for those people that can't take care of themselves. So thank you.
I also want to join in. Mr. Canales, you know, I've known you for years and the work you've done and the advocacy that you bring to this issue. It is a human rights issue. If, if anything, if one wants to make the argument, just make sure they're safe, just to send them back home, or to give them an opportunity in a new land. I think it's about protecting life, and, and the policies we have on the federal level make it difficult for people to be able to, to enjoy life here, and y'all help bring dignity to those lives in what you do. So I thank you for bringing that before us, and, and I support that part of it for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Modas. Appreciate that.
Thank you. So, so Mr. Canales, only because it's listed on our executive session, what we're, what we're going to do is when I go into it, when I give notice that we're going to go into executive session, there'll be a discussion and they'll pass out the letter, and then we'll come back into open session, and if it's appropriate, we'll take action at that time. But I do want to make sure that you've gotten everything that you need to, to share with the court about the research project.
We'll continue to have the discussions with the county attorney to make sure that everything that meets privacy requirements and everything else. We have, have done that with Attorney Jenny Dorsey.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Again, one question, do we have to really go behind doors? And do you, do you want us to go behind doors and take care of this, or what?
Do you even know what you're signing? I mean, we don't even know, I don't even know, that's what I'm saying, I have no...
We wouldn't get the letter either, so...
There are, are issues with confidentiality, there are issues with voluntariness that I would like to discuss with the court before you make a blanket.
Okay. All right.
Okay, but we'll be, we'll come back after executive session. Thank you, Mr. Canales.
Deanna, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. And now we're going to move to discussing, considering the approval of an interlocal agreement with Community Supervision Corrections Department, otherwise known as CSCD. This is part of our risk assessment services in our jail, and I believe everything is in order, but I would like that confirmation. Belinda, everything's in order with this interlocal agreement?
Yes, the county attorney reviewed it.
And this is the same one we do, you know, it's the same as last year?
It is, but I do believe that they added an additional officer...
That is correct.
Because they saw the need, and therefore, that third officer would be, was already included in your ARPA planning and would be funded through your ARPA funds.
That's, that is correct. But the document itself, the actual agreement, contractually, is, is the same. All right.
I've got a question for you.
Okay.
Bill, I've got here, I don't know where I get it, but it's 131,000 from the general fund?
That's correct.
And then 42,000 from the ARPA fund, so it's not all coming from the ARPA fund?
No, the additional officer is going to be coming from the, the ARPA funds, because it was originally budgeted for two, and they asked for three.
Okay. But 131, it is general funds, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Why would it do, why would we have to go to general funds? We can't just do the ARPA?
When we originally started this about two or three years ago, with the, with the grants coming in from, Judge Watson created a grant, the grant paid for some electronic equipment, but we were, we were required to, after the grant was over, to continue the process of paying this through, the balances of the funds were paid for through our Court Administration Department 3300. This was brought up many years, the next following years, we were, were asked to continue this, and we, and the court chose to do this, with the funding coming out of the general fund.
Okay. All right.
The 42, actually, is just for the third officer period?
Correct. Okay, so having the discussion, was there a motion made? I don't think so. Is there a motion to approve this interlocal agreement?
So moved.
I'll second. Okay, I'll take Commissioner Modas's as second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Scott Crash, you're on.
Okay.
Number items three and four, the first is eight. This is the best...
And five.
And five.
And E1, if possible.
We'll take them all in order.
Okay.
Start with the change order, that's a no-cost change order. I repeat, a no-cost change order.
No cost, recommend approval.
Yeah.
So moved.
Motion second. The only discussion is, I got a good email that said, I think, six out of the nine windows were in.
Yeah, we got six of them, yeah. It's the whole supply chain thing, Judge.
I know.
Yeah.
But it just, that's really what's happening here. It's really exciting. We're getting really close.
We, we should get our C of O.
Certificate of Occupancy.
I'm sorry, yes, in the next couple of weeks.
Awesome. All right.
And Judge, it's sort of, it's relevant, because it's Horse Caldwell, peer building. This is also something that I think everybody on the court needs to be reminded of, too. This is where we had discussed, and we need to formalize it, but we discussed it when we got our settlement money from, this is, right, we're doing Horse Caldwell on this one, right? This is, okay, sorry.
That's correct.
We got our settlement money on this, we, we hope that we would replenish the CIP and other funds, so that, that's a, that's kind of a nice thing, that the court's going to get back into the CIP funds, because we, we borrowed, if you will, we use CIP funds to, to fund this, the court was kind enough to do that.
CO funds, yeah.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
What did I say?
CIP.
CIP, well, CO, CIP, right. And so this is one of those areas where these funds will go back into the CIP, so that the court can, can use those accordingly, so I don't...
And Agenda Item Number Five will give you plenty of room... And agenda item number five will give you plenty of room to talk about that.
Okay, all right. I'll wait for that one.
Yeah. And I just wanna double check that if we didn't do it, Dale, that we did. I know we did a reimbursement provision for sure on Ivy McGee Park office. Did we also do a reimbursement provision for Horace Caldwell? I don't recall.
I don't know that we ever formalized that one.
We may need to do that. I don't believe we did, Brent.
There were the general funding, general reimbursement request, funding of, of a order that said that we were gonna reimburse, I believe that it said a specific, specific location for the 2021 CO, so I believe it'll cover all of it.
Thank you, Dale. Okay.
Recommend approval. Call question, Judge.
Yes, of course. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm just thinking about the dollars, sorry. I was already, I was already seeing dollar signs here.
That's okay, and I could get into it a little bit more than item number five.
And item number five, a four actually is important. It's the Conrad Blutcher Institute. It's a supplemental.
Yeah, real quick, Commissioner Chesney, you had agreed to leverage $50,000 of some of your funding sources along with the cost savings we had from the original interlocal contract. You also authorized me to work with Conrad Blutcher Institute, Deidre and myself, to independently come up with the tasks that we were gonna use that money for that was gonna benefit the county the most, and we've done that. And this is what this is. This is going forward to continue with that work with them. With the 165,000 and some odd that was left over from the other one, we're not asking for anything new money. And what you leveraged, we're gonna be able to continue to do this coastal monitoring of our beaches and our dune systems that are still healing from Hannah. And so, I really appreciate that. I recommend approval.
So moved.
I think I heard a second as well. Motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then number five is a time extension, but it's also a little bit of additional fees. And this is just to finish up the ADA portion.
Yes. If you recall, sometime back, y'all had worked with, y'all, y'all had given 650,000 towards this ADA ramp and, and modification Horace Caldwell pier. The bulk of that was 2019 COs. There's some other funding sources mixed in. I guess if you wanted to know the finite details, you could ask Teresa. She tracks all that really well. But anyhow, so, what we've got here is, is that Hanson has been working on the ramp itself. And then, once you get off the ramp, you still have to have the accessible route to the observation deck. So, they gotta make sure all that's got the right cross slope and everything. Well, the one thing they didn't have was the ADA parking. Now, recall, I came to y'all a while back, and because we're making the RTA stop accessible and the parking is gonna be on each side of the RTA stop, if you didn't wanna use, it's $9,500. It's there. Because the 650 that you gave me, there's a good chunk of that still there. We've, we've used a little bit here and there, some change orders, but the majority of it's still there, still safe. We got it funded, but if you wanted to consider using RTA funds to cover this $9,500, I don't see why you couldn't because we're actually making the RTA bus stop meet ADA accessibility to the parking, to the ramp, and to the pier where it was before.
I'm, I'm happy to use my RTA funds.
I have plenty as well.
You have some as well, so we can get it.
And so, I recommend approval of the no-cost time extension so they, I mean, the, the extension and, and the fees so they can finish the parking lot. Because without ADA parking, you have a ramp to nowhere, so to speak.
Can we have a motion on both of those?
I haven't seen RTA fund balances in a while either. Are those still, we're still getting those yearly?
Yes, we, you should receive it every time we give you a monthly report, give you a year in balances. But we'll provide you a list for a second.
Split that, Judge, or?
Yeah, I'm happy to. And mine had already been designated for Port A, so if, if, even if you wanted to save all of yours, I'd, it's.
Remember, Judge, that you were gonna let me rebuild that. You were gonna let me rebuild the R K stop, but the city came in, none knows the meaning.
Yeah, see, what happened was I had dedicated ours to Port A because, but then the city came in and basically fixed it. So, I have that, I believe, Teresa, we could reallocate those to this part, to this.
That's one. Move.
Why don't you go ahead and make your motion and, and specify the funding?
With the funds that the judge had previously allocated for Port A?
Correct.
That'd be my motion. Move passage with the funds.
The $9,500, go ahead.
Previously provided by Judge Canales for Port A.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay.
One E.
Let's do one E in advance and we'll come back to the regular agenda.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Scott.
Okay, so, as, as all y'all know, we've been going through the demo specs and bidding process with Purchasing. And Michael and his crew have done a phenomenal job of leading that. Anyhow, so, as you know, on this whole pier project, you have Jacobs is doing the design work, but you also have Land that's doing the program side of things. And so, after all the bids came in, Land's, Lockwood Andrews and Newman, excuse me, role in that process as program manager was to go through and evaluate all the bids and check out all the references. And they developed the scoring matrix that they shared with us that when the scoring committee, which I was on.
Hold on just a second. Before I see the scoring matrix, I gotta ask these questions because I don't, I wanna, I don't, I don't wanna ask, ask them after I see them because it may look wrong. Why wouldn't this one just be whoever has the low bid gets it? Because when I, when I, what I saw in my packet was there was a low bidder. So, before I see the matrix, because I don't know who the selection committee is recommending so that everybody's clear. I'm not, don't, I don't wanna see it. Not yet. I wanna ask that question because when I see a bid like this and then I hear a scoring matrix coming, I go, wait a minute, why can't we, why wouldn't it just be whoever the lowest bidder was?
So, in this case, go ahead and answer the question.
Yeah, yeah, so, these, these guys.
Don't tell me who the winner of that.
Yeah, no, no, these guys, the bidders.
There's a legal reason. I'm really asking more the legal question.
Okay, these bidders, these bidders were so close and so tight, we had to look for defining characteristics. And that's when we started doing the reference checks that they, they provided us. They provided us their own references. We didn't dig them up.
No, no, I know. I, I know why, I know how.
That's why we did it.
My, my legal question is, Jenny, why isn't this just a low bid wins thing? And again, I don't know who the selection committee has recommended. I have no dog in this fight. I'm asking this because I wanna be transparent. Why isn't this just low bid wins?
It should have been low bid to begin with.
You can, you can do that. And the only reason, I think Cynthia Creek is here, who can fill out. But if, the only issue that I would address is if you don't, then we have a process. But it's, low bid is, I think, what the.
Help me out here because if we have, if it's a low bid, then you don't have the opportunity. What gives us the option to have a selection committee on a bidded-out process?
For example, if you wanted.
So, if I can just real quickly, I, I don't know the details of this, but I do wanna point out that this was a competitive seal proposal versus an invitation. It was a competitive seal proposal, not an invitation for low bid. Not an invitation for bid. Those are two different competitive mechanisms.
Because it's a, tell me that term.
Competitive sealed proposal.
So, meaning.
If it's, if it's a CSP, you can score them.
Right. It was the way the procurement was done.
Right, so tell me, and I may have, I'm not saying I didn't.
But the low bid is the recommendation. So, I wanted you to know that.
I didn't wanna know. That's what I'm trying to say. I mean, I'm trying to ask these questions because I don't, I don't, I just wanna understand going forward why we do competitive, the CSPs and why we do sealed. Sorry, I can't even talk. Why we do, that's what I'm trying to get to is, what, what's the difference? Why do we do sealed bids and why do we do competitive bids? Why do we do the difference? In other words, if it's a project like this and the companies are all legit, then I don't wanna get into a scoring mechanism because then there, to me, could be some, somebody says something is funny, right? So, why did, why did we do it as a competitive sealed proposal, if that's right, Belinda, or Scott, or who? Do we remember why we did it like that?
I think we went, we used the project mate software when we put all this through. I know that much. And I'm not very familiar how the software works. I need to get better at that. But that was the process that, that L A N and Purchasing agreed to, and I can't tell you the answer to that.
Okay, so I think.
Well, what if you wanted to consider local, for example? Let's just say that your bids are incredibly even. Then, a competitive seal proposal would allow you to not only check references, but it would allow you to make the consideration that if you chose, let's say, bidder D from Wisconsin, that if it's a $10,000 separation, for instance, that, let's say, ABC Company from Corpus Christi, Texas would use local people, local jobs.
Okay, now, that is a legitimate reason.
Economic. Well, that is exactly why competitive seal proposals are done.
And I bet I can get to your answer real easy if you let me finish.
Well, and that's, like I said, I, I want, because I want this to be above board, right? I know we all do. And so, if, if.
Well, it is, definitely.
If, if a, if a, what allows you to then compare, and, and how many local people are used? I mean, okay, if that's a legitimate, legal way of doing the competitive sealed process, then, man, I'm all over it. But I don't want it to appear to be to anyone out there that it's a way to get somebody a bid that somebody didn't earn, right? So, so, there's a real fine line there, and I know nobody on this court would wanna do it that way. So, I know I'm making a big deal. I'm mounting out of a molehill, but it's a $3 million contract. And I want local people to understand that we're making sure that local people have the opportunity. But I also want people to make sure and understand that we are doing this with no agenda other than the best value and the best project for the, for the county. So, I, I mean, to me, that was just, I mean, that's a good process. So, I think going forward, we need to have those discussions as a court on these big, especially these big contracts, on which direction we wanna go. Do we wanna do the competitive sealed process? And if that, if, if the judge is, I'm sure she is, correct on why you can do that and that allows us some flexibility. Not a lot, like if it's a million dollar difference or a $500,000 difference. But if it's like this one, I mean, it was, this was tight. I mean, this was like $6,000 on, on one and, and $100,000 between the high and the low on a $3 million contract. That's amazing. That's, that's tight, right? So, that means everybody's doing it. So, I, I get it. And I just pulled this one out for a reason. And I apologize for wasting, I'm not trying to waste the court's time, but I think it's important to note these things.
So, what we ended up doing, the scoring committee got together, and we went through the evaluations that Land worked up for us and, and the matrix they developed. And we looked at it, and every single one of these bidders came out exactly the same. So, what we're coming to you with today, the only separating factor now is price point. They were all equal in performance across the board, all equal in, their, references across the board. They're all very reputable companies. They, they have their niches here and there, up and down the Texas coast. So, our recommendation based on price point now is gonna be Russell Marine, their low bid. That's where we had to go.
And is that local?
Nope.
No, that, that's, that's why I wish you would let him finish. So, so, the irony here is that the competitive sealed bid proposal allows us to check all of the different boxes for background, performance, competency, history.
Violations.
Violations, everything. And when we do that, everybody looks very competitive and very equal. So, then, unfortunately, here, and it's just a recommendation, but the recommendation from the committee is go with the low bid. But that's a recommendation for the court then to consider. So, there were three major bidders. Only one was be local. The low bidder was from Galveston. Then the other bidder was from Houston, and they were the second lowest bidder. And then the last bidder was local. And, but the separation is still relatively.
Small.
Diminimus. Scott Harris is on the line. I don't know if he was gonna speak to it or Cynthia was gonna speak to it.
Can I ask this question?
But in this case, the low bidder did not prove what sometimes you would want, which is that it was local.
I'd like for you to see the scoring sheet.
I'd love to see the scoring sheet. Is, is local, is local on the scoring sheet?
Yes.
It is?
Yes. But I do wanna emphasize that local was not the low bidder.
No, it was local part of the matrix, I mean. Did y'all?
Well, local.
Local participation is a part of the scoring matrix?
No, but we, that's what this is a body. We can, we can make that a part of the matrix.
I get it. But, but in y'all's scoring, part of the matrix did not include local participation?
We just looked at their, their, their work product on a local basis.
Yes, it did.
I'm not saying did anything wrong. I'm saying maybe the matrix should change for the future because for me, having a local element in the matrix, if the court concurs, would be an important element of a scoring matrix.
Well, it is. It is in the history. I would say that it doesn't say the word local, but in, in the conversation of what is history, what is performance, you absolutely consider local.
Commissioner, we were looking at, at previous work products by all these companies. We were looking at those that were done, done here locally, that were comparable to what we're asking to be done. And even, we even looked at those that weren't done here locally, to be fair about everything, to see that it was comparable to what we're asking them to perform at. We looked at OSHA history. Did any of these have OSHA violations? Did they have fines? I mean, we really got into weeds on this, so we vetted this very carefully for you guys.
I, I don't doubt that. I just, I, I would like to put forth for the court's consideration that going forward in the future, that we have something in the scoring matrix regarding local participation.
I'm getting that that is not permitted to, yeah.
For scoring?
For the scoring, for the scoring matrix, Michael Robinson has communicated to me that they're not allowed to use, to give a local preference.
Okay, show me the law.
Okay, but, but I will say that under the history, the way that you can address it is under the history and company performance. And that is why, when you look at the points, they were given that ability. But it's this court, this court can say, we think it's more important to be local and not go with the recommendation because you believe that that has value. You can do that. But the recommendation that came out of the committee was low, low bid. All things, all other things being equal.
Yeah, because that was the only thing we could use to separate them at that point.
No, I, I.
And, and y'all don't have to take our recommendation. It could be tabled and then you could bring it back. And there's a whole nother series of events that, that y'all can go through to legitimize your decision. But we can't do that here. You just have to either take the recommendation and decide to table it.
What I'd like to do is, I'd like to, I've got legal questions, so I'm gonna, I'd like to take it in the executive session, Judge.
Let's do that.
I wanna decide something today because we need to get going.
We do need to decide today.
Anything to delay this demolition. So, I wanna be clear, I'm not, I'm not advocating any kind of delay past this meeting at all. We need to move. So, I just have legal questions that I would like to ask, please.
So, we will take this up. So, Scott, maybe you can, if you need to go, you could always participate by.
Online.
Online, okay? So, we'll go ahead and table that for a little bit later in the, in the timeframe after executive session. So, those questions, if you ask Michael to go ahead and.
Thank you.
I know that to be the case as well, but would you have him to send that language so the court can see that? Okay, so we're gonna move to item number six. Go back to your regular agenda. Item number six is establishing the independent redistricting commission to include a possible, and, and, sorry, semicolon, also to include investigating possible funding opportunities. And so, it's really a two-part consideration here. Commissioner?
Yeah, I just wanna make some comments on this. I, 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 you know, I was, as we went through this process, I indicated I didn't really have a problem doing it when, for our court, if that's the way it was. We just didn't have time. I think everybody acknowledged that was one of the most open, you know, redistricting process ever. I don't know that it's appropriate for this court to bind future courts. So, I, I, I mean, I don't think we're gonna do, and those lines turned out great. I, I mean, everybody was fine. I don't think we're gonna, I don't wanna revisit redistricting until we have to again. Would, would it be appropriate to just put this down the road a little bit? Because, and I'm not trying to get it off the agenda because in theory, whatever, but to bind the court 10 years from now or eight, six years from now, I mean, that most of us might not even be on? I mean, that's a little, is it a little premature?
I think that maybe the county attorney could, could guide us. But my understanding is, is that you could form something and then a future court would disband it if they wanted to.
Not acknowledge it. So, what's the point, right? I don't, I mean, is it, it, in other words.
I don't know. I guess the point would be that future courts would get to make their own decisions.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So, wouldn't you just wait and put it on?
Wouldn't you say to be an advisory committee?
Sure.
Because the thing here is talking about funding and everything. I, I wouldn't have a problem with an advisory committee just to.
But to do what? For the next nine years?
Just to provide some feedback and.
No, but I'm, that's what I'm saying. I mean, for, for when though? I mean, we're not gonna do this again for nine years.
Well, all I can say is that if it needs more vetting to actually establish it, we can do that. But I know I gave my word that I would support an independent redistricting commission when the League of Women Voters came. And, I mean, I put on the part about possible funding because I think it needs to be explored. I don't know how to do that, and I would like to make sure that somebody checks into that.
So, could you?
Could we, could we table, table that? But I know that in order to have the type that we were handed, remember the handout? I mean, you actually have to have.
But I'm not for that. I will tell you, I'm not for spending a half million bucks on a redistrict.
I just wanted you to know that.
I'm not for that. I'm.
But they may have another solution.
And Tim Dowling even said, he thought it would be way less than that. So, I just.
I wonder if he's online.
I would just think we need to put it on so that someone has to consider it at the appropriate time. But to try to, we can't bind, there's nothing we can do today that can bind a court to do this eight years from now. There's nothing we can do.
I agree with that. I think all the committees are like that.
I would be happy supporting something like this if we had some timeframes. Like, if we talked in general. Like if we talked in generalities, by year 2027, the committee is appointed, you know, bipartisan committee selected of, you know, so many independents, Democrats, Republicans. And if we can kind of get some specifics like that, and, and, yeah, we know it's going to take future courts to decide, but, but we can put some, some dates, some timeframes to it, then that gives a little meat to it, because I, I don't, I don't want to burden ourselves with, you know, using any time or resources right now and it not be honored. I mean, I think if we can show the value of saying, a few years out, a committee must be selected, and this is what we recommend, I have no problem making that recommendation. But to establish it now, to be in existence in 30, you know, in 2030 or before 2030, that, that's going to be difficult to hold even to the best of intentions. So I would like to see if we could come down with maybe a resolution that maybe has some specifics. Maybe that could be something that we can kind of sink our teeth into. And we're, we're acknowledging it, we're verifying it through, you know, a written, hopefully approved, resolution for future courts to understand and just pull out and say, okay, the hard work's already been done, you know, these dates were selected, or these years were selected, and we're five years out, and now we need to kind of start getting our plan together and be prepared by year 2027. Because in my opinion, that's about the time you really need to start looking at this, is, you know, at least two or three years out.
Or do you just put some, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, John, sorry.
So...
So we won't table this?
That's what I would like to see, something, something like that. I mean, I, I'm not trying to punt, punt it down the line, but I do think that whatever we establish now, there's not going to be any work to be done for at least five, six, seven years at the earliest.
Could you, could you pass something that just says that, that this court is resolved to put it on the agenda in a year certain for that court to determine?
See, something like that.
How about if we just, how about if we table this to get it a little bit more refined and for consideration? And I don't see anybody on that would even, yeah.
Dr. Scott's here, though, she may, she may...
Oh, Dr. Scott, right in front of me, I'm looking this way. Hi, Dr. Scott.
I had several, I had planned where the League of Women Voters United, that's women, all of us are wondering, when, not to press this way, way back. So can, can that be a definite, just table it into when?
We can't, I don't think we can.
Well, I think...
Not, not five years from now.
No, I just meant table the agenda items so that we could come visit with you, because I think what the court's looking for are some real parameters. I guess something actually like a document that, that you might suggest for the court's consideration.
And Dr. Scott, my suggestion is, or my thought is, I don't think we can bind a future court to do anything. I really don't. I don't think we can, we can't make them do anything.
We can't bind anybody to do anything. The question is, what do we do now?
Right, so the question would be, if we say some sort of resolution that says that it will be back on the court's agenda at a date certain for that court to determine what they want to do, because I, I don't, I don't, I don't, Commissioner Remondes, I don't think there's going to be any work being done on this for four or five years.
I'll tell you what, how about if we table this till one of the next courts this month, or next month? And it gives me a chance to meet with the League of Women Voters and the advocates, and let me bring back something that looks a lot different than just the blanket, set up a committee.
It's in a lecture too, you might want to decide something, then say in January of next year, we can really come back.
All right, let me, let me just meet with you guys, because I think Tim Dowling's point was not for seven years from now. It was, it was for immediate.
To do what?
That's what I want to get with him.
Yeah, to do what?
Let me just get with the commission, he did give us some, some data and some best practices that he thought El Paso had put together. And I think there's at least enough interest on the court to take another step. We have a court on February 2nd, which is next week, that might be too soon, Dr. Scott, but I can pledge to you in the next few weeks to meet with you all and see what parameters an agenda item or a resolution might look like.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely. I'm going to table to Feb. 26th, is that right? Feb. 23?
Feb. 23rd.
Sorry, Feb., today's the 26th, Feb. 23. Motion, I'd like a second.
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And I will reach out this afternoon, Dr. Scott, to make sure we get that meeting set. At this time, I'm going to move to item number seven, is to consider the commissioner's court manager, I'm sorry, consider authorizing the commissioner's court manager to retain an employee recruiter firm to assist with recruitment of professional staff for medical examiner office. I did reach out to TIDAM and put a star request in, given the vacancy that we have in the medical examiner's office, and we were told that they were unable to fulfill that request at this time. However, they did give me an opportunity to, they referred me to a particular firm, and I would like the courts to weigh in on having the court manager at least explore that firm and what they do, in hopes that we could recruit somebody for that vacancy in our medical examiner office.
Wouldn't it fall under HR really? I mean, why?
Why the court manager?
Yes.
Wait, what?
Well, the court manager would work with HR. You have to put somebody in charge.
So are we able to do that? Or, in other words...
Well, there is a posted position right now, so it is posted on several websites. But our experience is that, and that's why the state can't assist, is that there is a national shortage. And so in order to really be able to recruit professional staff at this level that we are looking for, we need to
I, I...
consider, consider that you're going to have to go truly recruit, which means ask somebody to leave one position and come to another.
I, I agree that we have to be looking for someone, I just don't know what the proper fashion is. So could the motion just be that we authorize the county manager to bring back to us
Correct.
what that, what, what that is? Legally, I mean legally, can we do it? I just don't know what the right way to do it is, is, should we post it on ME websites? I don't, I don't know what the right way is.
So all of those have been done, just so you know, they've all been done. This is really more, this is a professional recruiter.
But the, but...
This is to do one more step.
But I think the ME has to hire that person, we can't.
That's correct, but at least a professional recruiter could come and bring a different set of applications. Because they're actually taking people who aren't looking for jobs and trying to recruit them to leave that job and come to our job.
So here's my problem, back on the ME thing, this is my theme for the day, so I'm not picking on this issue. This is my theme for the day. I don't know what to do right now, based on what we haven't heard. And so I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, until we go into executive session, and, and then we're going to have, I've asked to put the item on the ME back on for discussion next week for the agenda. I don't know how to make a decision, because I don't know what's going to come of everything, and everything else is happening, and knowing that the ME has to be the person, I think, that hires this person...
Well, actually, Belinda has found a part of the statute that allows the commissioner's court to weigh in, I think. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it's hired by the ME, but with the approval of the court.
Right, in other words, we can have an approval.
But the ME has to hire.
He does have to hire. However, again, if you want to make the motion that you give the court manager slash HR, remember the court manager is over HR, the option to retain a recruiter, you're going to be able to find, you can't, we, we have to recognize that we have a vacancy.
No, no, I...
And we have to recognize that there's a national shortage, and that in the past, we've gone out for a year looking for people.
Can we hold this one until executive session? I just...
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think it can be under employment.
Yes.
Okay, as an exception for executive session.
This all relates to the ME stuff that we've got, yeah.
But I really want you to know that for the administration of law and justice in this courthouse, that we need to
Don't disagree with your concept.
Really go get somebody excellent.
I don't disagree with your concept, I just have some legal questions.
All right, I'll hold, I'll hold seven, just make sure that we go back to it, okay? Let's go to item number eight, and that's discuss the status Winter Storm U.R. reimbursement, TIDAM FEMA. We've got Kalen Papura, Kalen Taylor, online with Hagerty. And we have some good synopsis of where we are on this. We also have Dale as well. So who would like to begin? I'm going to bring up my FEMA, my latest TIDAM notes here for Winter Storm. Kalen Taylor, would you just give us the background of where we are on the, on Winter Storm and those emergency protection measures that have been authorized to have submissions? And then just kind of take it from there and allow the court to ask questions. Dale can also provide some background on finances as well.
Yes, most certainly. Good morning, commissioners, Kalen here again.
Good morning.
So we have seen a lot of movement very recently with FEMA on the county's category B winter weather FEMA Public Assistance Project. If you'll recall, for that winter weather disaster from last February, FEMA only allowed or made funding available for emergency work, so that's what we've been pursuing. We've been meeting very frequently with the assigned PA delivery manager. It's kind of the point of contact, who gathers any additional details or contacts needed for them to make a final determination. And so we have seen some, some minor tweaks. For example, there were some blankets and smaller generators that we realized were purchased, but not actually utilized as part of this disaster. So we did remove those items. Those will go back in the county stock, and if you use them for a future disaster in which there is a declaration, you can claim them then. We also did get some feedback on the treating of roads during the disaster. Unfortunately, that's considered a snow-related activity under FEMA Public Assistance. And when requesting a major disaster declaration, the state of Texas had to request that for, you know, particular counties. Unfortunately, Noises County was not one of those that did get that snow activity-specific declaration. So we did have to remove those treatments. That was very common for counties and cities all over the state. I think it was only two or three that did get that declaration. And that news came available to us after we submitted the application, so we did have to decrease that a little bit. We also submitted a late damage inventory request for additional Tiger rental costs for water and then the emergency rental generator for R and B. Those were costs that were discovered after the application was submitted. So we did submit a formal request to have those included in the project, and that's another just under $70,000 of emergency costs. But all in all, you know, we're still on that back and forth with FEMA. I think the exciting thing is, is that we're meeting with them weekly. So we're really having some productive back and forth, whereas before then, we got a couple requests for information and wouldn't hear back. So I think we're really close to getting this moved to the next project. Should be going to the CRC, see if they have any questions, for them to make final determinations, and then hopefully get this project obligated and awarded very soon.
And Kalen, just so the court has awareness, so the preparation for the roads was when Public Works, you know, basically put the salt and the other, other, whatever composite they put on the roads for protection. That was an amount that was under $10,000, is that correct?
Yes, that was about $4,000.
Okay.
And it was mainly Public Works force account labor and then equipment usage.
And just to be super clear, the reason that we're not getting an opportunity to find reimbursement for that is because we were not, we did not have any snow accumulation. That seems quite harsh, I've already expressed my opinion to FEMA
Yes.
about that, as well as TIDAM. We didn't receive snow, but TexDOT shut down every one of our bridges from JFK Causeway all the way to the Harbor Bridge. It seems bizarre that they would not reimburse us for that, which was obvious, which is that if TexDOT shuts down all your bridges, you would think that they would acquiesce to the idea that you should prepare your roads. So what we did was in the interest of public safety, but it just doesn't qualify because it needed, we actually had to have snow, apparently, in order to qualify. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we fought really hard for that $4,000, and it's not going to happen, because we did not have National Weather Service confirmation of physical snow.
Yes, and despite the way that the entire state of Texas was affected, and I think that's probably the one activity that most entities were doing, right? Treating their roads. We are in the same boat, unfortunately, as the majority of the state, in not receiving that allowability.
Okay, and you'll keep us all posted. As Kalen said, we meet with them every week. We've had lots of good progress in the last, I'd say, two, three weeks. And we'll keep the court updated with regards to any movement that, that might happen. Are there any, anything else you want to add, Kalen, before I open it up to questions?
Do you have some, some estimates just for the, the court's awareness? So after we removed those items, the value of the project was $270,000 and $300,000, $270,000 about. And then with the late damage inventory requests, we're adding that Tiger rental, water and generator. Again, you know, they'll still need to make a determination on those costs, but that would bring you back up to just under $340,000.
And what will we be submitting, the whole $340? That's the, that's the amount you'll, we'll be submitting?
They won't submit that.
We lost you just for a second.
I apologize, I'm having some connectivity issues.
I see it. I was just asking that if, if that's, in other words, you had to subtract a few things, like the, the Public Works, you know, the $4,000, so is $340 all in? That's what we'll be submitting for reimbursement?
I thought you said, I thought you said...
I apologize, I'm having connectivity issues, so Caitlin, if you want to jump in, but with the late DI request, you'd be back to just under $340,000.
Okay, that's all, that's all, I was just confirming, that's it. Okay, now we'll open it up to questions. If anyone has any questions of Kalen on the TIDAM FEMA.
I have a question, Judge.
Go ahead.
Kalen, on the request for reimbursement, what is the total amount submitted to TIDAM? And how much has, has been reimbursed to the county?
For their, for their Winter Storm, nothing's been reimbursed yet. The Hagerty and Maria will be the ultimate source of finding out how much has been submitted. They're the ones that do the submissions.
Did the reimbursement requests include the water distribution to hospitals? If so, did TIDAM approve the reimbursement?
Again, you'll have to ask that of Caitlin, I believe that she just mentioned Tiger rental about, about water and other sources, so I believe that was another issue that was included in their, in their request. They're the ones that you'll have to address that question to.
Is she already gone?
No, no, she's here. Kalen, did, I don't know
Yeah.
if you could hear the question.
Yeah, I'm available, Tom.
So the, the question is threefold. It's one, what is the amount that you're going to request for TIDAM reimbursement? How much has been received? And I think you've answered both of those, but would you repeat those? And then the third has to do with, what about the submission for water? Does that, is that included in the $340? And I just emailed to all of you, and maybe somebody can flip it to Commissioner Hernandez. It's signed by Dr. Osbert Blow, CEO of Krista Spawn, Dr. Jack Cortese, President of the Noises County Medical Society, Eric Evans, CEO of Corpus Christi Medical Center, Eric Hayman, President, CEO of Triskel Health System, Hillary Watt, Executive Director and CEO and CFO of Coastal Bend Regional Advisory Council, our trauma unit. And this letter was requested as part of our justification. And it speaks to that the local medical facilities, and I quote, "were unable to locate emergency water or water delivery services and requested emergency assistance from Noises County." And it goes on further to say that we sourced, coordinated and funded emergency water delivery that were critical to medical facilities within the county, and it's signed by all parties, and that is going, that is submitted to TIDAM.
But is it reimbursed?
It is reimb, go ahead, Kalen.
So Commissioner, we're, we're not yet at the stage where we're receiving or submitting reimbursement requests. Unfortunately, yeah, that'll take place after the project is formally awarded. But FEMA is conducting a high-level review for eligibility of those costs. So that's kind of where we're at right now. We have provided some additional information on the water deliveries, and we'll provide the memo the judge just referenced to support those costs. But unfortunately, we're not at a stage where FEMA is telling us definitely yes or no. So once this project is formally awarded, then the county will submit reimbursement requests to the state, and that's when you'll receive 75% back reimbursement on eligible costs. If you'll recall, unlike COVID, this is a standard 75, 25 federal share, which means the, you know, FEMA will pay for 75% of your eligible costs. The county will be responsible for your 25% of those costs, that's your local share, your local match. So we're not yet at the point where they're giving us a yes or no. So we're not yet at the point where they're giving us a yes or no. But as I, you know, as I mentioned, we did have to remove some costs from the project as part of this process. The water delivery services is not in that book.
It's a super long process and we're not even close to getting to that submission. But we've, it's begun since the day, you know, when, when the winter storm is over, then our recovery begins. And this is part of what grants, emergency management, Hagerty, our office does, is provide all of the important documentation that's requested and required. And then there's a big portal system. And that's why we have meetings with them every single week. We and the other two hundred and fifty-four counties are doing the same thing. And we're getting very close to finishing, ass, providing them what they want. And then after they get all the information, then they make a final determination based on what was open, which is called, what the, what's the category? Is it category for emergency protection?
It's category B for emergency water for this disaster.
So category B was federally declared, and we only work with what's federally declared. So we're not even allowed to submit to FEMA unless you have a federal declaration in a particular category. So everything that is eligible under category B will be submitted.
I understand, and I don't want, mean to take too much of your time. But you did say you were, you had to remove, you had to remove some of, some of the items? Can you say what kind of items you had to remove?
Yeah, certainly. So, um, those were some blankets that were purchased, um, some generators, personal portable generators, and then the water, excuse me, the road treatment activity costs. The road treatment, you know, as we discussed, that was because snow activities was not part of the declaration. The blankets and generators, um, we realized later that, you know, although they are purchased for this disaster, they weren't utilized as part of the response. So those items are back in the county stock. Um, and if they are utilized as part of a future response to, let's say, a hurricane, at that point in time, if there's a declaration, you can seek reimbursement for that stock usage. Um, and then we also removed the, this was much earlier on, the turtle burial costs. Um, FEMA did not authorize category A debris removal. And they ultimately said that they felt that that fell into that category rather than category B. Those costs were also minimal, about four thousand. Um, and like I said, luckily, this opportunity has provided us an opportunity to submit the additional costs for Tiger rentals. Um, so we're hopeful, you know, those will get included in the project and obligated. And I'd also like to note that, you know, we're submitting completed costs as far as, as part of this project. So they're, they already have access to contracts, invoices, proof of payment. So once it is awarded, the, um, the process with the state to actually receive reimbursement should be fairly short because we'll just submit one request for all the costs. We've already got everything substantiated, all the necessary documentation. Um, so we're hopeful that once we get it awarded, you know, it should be fairly simple from there on out. And we can move to close out and wrap it up entirely.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay.
No problem.
Thank you. And again, um, maybe it'd be helpful on the blankets and those individual generators. Those were also minimal costs, and maybe you can identify those later just in an email. But if any of you are wondering why you'd want a small, like the type you'd get at Home Depot or Lowe's, individual generator, it's because we have learned, uh, that those people living on, for example, oxygen tanks or some sort of life-saving medical devices at home during critical times, that they actually sometimes can't leave their home. But when they lose electricity and power, their lives are compromised. And so these individual generators that we'll now have in emergency management will be available so that we could make those deliveries if needed or if required. And this definitely comports with our new state law that really, um, asks us and obligates us as a county to make certain that our vulnerabilities are, um, are really checked on during these times of emergency. And so I think that's a, a really important new tool that we'll have. And I hope we can continue to build up our strategic reserve of all of the life-saving, um, uh, device, powered, um, generators. Okay, well, with that, we'll move on. That's information only and hearing no other questions or concerns. We'll move on to item number nine. And that's asking Dale if there's anything, uh, that we should consider as a court regarding the overtime hours presented.
Yes, Your Honor, uh, at last court, y'all authorized the, my office to track the expenses for, or track the time for overtime. Should there be, y'all approved the funding sources for it for the last two weeks. Uh, we did track the, uh, the time for the employees that, that submitted the request. On you, you've been provided a form showing you the three employees that did qualify and show, uh, time. Mr. Edward Herrera for, for testing in multiple sites for multiple hours. And then Dr. Wilmot and Mrs. Chavez from the Health Department for small hours. Total number of hours that was tracked was seventy-four point two-two hours. A total cost of three thousand five hundred and three dollars and twenty-seven cents, with the majority going to Mr. Herrera at sixty-nine point nine-four hours. That's a time in hours to, that has been accrued and submitted for your, uh, evaluation and, and approval.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve?
I have a question, Judge.
Yes.
On this, uh, is this also, does it also include hourly employees or is it just?
Our employees are required to be paid. We don't have a choice.
Okay.
They're all, they're already included.
They're already being paid.
We don't have a choice. Department of Labor requires hourly employees to be paid overtime if they accrued it.
Are they, are they being paid like ten percent or?
Pay their hourly rate. Their hourly rate and then overtime rate is time and a half.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, um.
And then Dale, would we have to approve going forward too, right?
Well, well, once you do this, then, then we ask, they ask the court again if you want to go ahead and track the next two weeks.
So.
This is just to determine the last two weeks. This is the number of hours and the amount of, of compensation if you so approve. And then we'll then ask you if you want to continue the next two weeks.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve and take it separately on the, um, motion to go for an additional two weeks. Um, and I'll look for a second at this time.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Three nays? Okay, um, then the motion does not pass for the clerk. And, um, on, um, what about the, uh, opportunity to have overtime be, um, continued for the next two weeks?
Tracking purposes, yes.
I mean, for tracking purposes. Okay, um, all those in, um, favor, uh, well, let me make a motion to track. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and motion a second, and all those in favor of tracking overtime for the purposes of our approval two weeks from now, um, signify by saying aye.
Nay.
Aye. Let me do ayes and opposed, same sign. It's easier for the clerk. Aye? I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Okay, and then opposed, same sign?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Hernandez, we can't hear you.
No.
Okay, so we're not going to be tracking overtime for the next two weeks. Okay, let's move on to B one. And, um, and the truth is, is that Dale, maybe it doesn't get tracked for you in the sense to present it, but it always is tracked inside our activity logs.
Yes.
Um, I need to make sure I remember, and maybe, I wish Kaylin hadn't jumped off, but, um, if we, yeah, well, never mind, because if you don't pay, you cannot get reimbursed, so.
We can't, we can't.
Right, so there's no way to get reimbursed even though it's allowed, um, uh, to, to submit.
Correct.
Okay, well, um, I'll move on to the Health District, uh, which is the, uh, Public Health Workforce Retention Pay for all eligible Health District employees to be funded through Department of State and Health Services agreement. And, yes?
I think the county attorney wanted to go into executive session on that one.
Okay, is that correct?
There's still information that we've not been given on those.
Okay, can you announce what that is? He's right here. I'm wondering if he could assist us in getting it so that we could at least discuss it in executive session.
Okay, what we've been trying to, to determine is, uh, we're trying to get the original agreements that, um, that outlined this process in the application and, um.
In the original application?
The process for this in the original application. And, um, we have been unable to determine, um, whether this tracks what the city has done on their side and does it have to? And we're still gathering information.
Okay, um, I'm gonna recognize Dr. Lewis Wilmot. You recognize the county attorney's looking for the original application. And, uh, I can tell you first and foremost, it does not track what the city, uh, did, but it does track what the state approved. Uh, would you be able to, in the time that we have, uh, get those documents to the county attorney? Um, she's asking for the original application, the original agreement that you presented to the state. And, um.
Absolutely, Judge.
I would appreciate that because.
So we do, we, this, this grant was two, there was two grants, one specifically for the county side and one for the city side, uh, as it addressed both county and city employees. So as, in an effort to try to smooth over the process and paying these employees, city side versus county side, so there are two different grants. Uh, one was in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars, which was for the county side. Uh, the city side was, um, uh, one point five million dollars, uh, for that particular side.
And we've been awarded these grants and we accepted those grants.
That is correct.
And so this is just to approve the formula. The, the county approved the application of the grant, and the county accepted the award of the grant. And this is to approve the formula for the grant. Is that correct?
The formula that was sub-
Submitted.
The submitted to the state was approved.
With the grant that we already approved.
Yes.
Can we confirm that we did, um, from the court administration side? I believe we have already accepted this grant. We accept the grant with all the terms of the grant. Does the court, in my recollection, the court's already approved, uh, the grant? Is that correct? Louis?
That is correct.
September the eighth.
September the eighth. So what we're doing is adhering to the grant's terms.
Yes.
Okay, so in my, um, my opinion, it'd be very smart. We could always, when we go before executive session, sometimes we take a fifteen-minute break. If you would use the time wisely, I'm going to continue on our agenda. But those documents, Francisco's sitting right there, Jenny's a little busy right now, but he's sitting right there. If you would see what he's lacking, you guys can use my office. See how you can get him what he needs so that when we do executive session, it's a little bit more fruitful.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I appreciate that. So I'm gonna call on Maria at this time, and that's C one. And this is the proposal of media services related to vaccine outreach. This is another grant. You'll recall the last time we were, we challenged, uh, to her department to bring us some more proposals, and she's done that for us today.
Yes, so, uh, good morning. It's still morning. Um, we did receive, um, again, back on, uh, January fifth, we brought you the K triple I TV proposal. Um, and then we were asked to, uh, provide additional proposals, um, to be funded under this grant. This grant, again, was the Texas, um, Vaccine Outreach and Education, a hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, and we got additional proposals from KRS Communications, Lopez Broadcasting, The Island Moon, Port Aransas South Jetty, as well as the Record Star, the Robstown Record Star. Um, and in looking at, you know, the period from now until the end of the grant, the grant ends on, um, August tenth, we would shoot for ending the, the services on July thirty-first, just to make it a little cleaner, give us some time for, uh, grant closeout. Um, in accepting all these proposals, um, KRS, uh, KRS Communications has a proposal for seventy-nine fifteen a month uh, for a six-month commitment. KRS TV, if you remember, on January fifth, you approved one-month commitment. Um, that has already been done. Uh, we're working on the, the pro, the content of the, um, advertising that will be conducted. Um, and then their five-month proposal outside of that one-month, uh, commitment is seventy-eight hundred dollars a month. Record Star, um, if we do, um, their ads are weekly. It is two hundred and ninety-seven, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and nineteen cents a week. The Island Moon is two hundred and twenty-five dollars a week. And the Port Aransas South Jetty is three hundred dollars and forty-two cents for the month. So if we run these campaigns from February first to July thirty-first, we will actually still have enough money in the grant. We would actually have a balance of twenty-two thousand, twenty-four dollars and ninety-two cents.
Okay, and. And, um.
You have that?
The proposals were attached to the agenda item. The only one we were lacking at the time of submission was the Record Star.
So I've got all this Island Moon, South Jetty, but, and I've got the magic one oh four, and then I'm looking.
Which one do you need? I might have.
I've got it all. No, I mean, I've got.
Did you get the channel six?
Did you put it in a total?
I, I do have a spreadsheet if you would like to see that.
Yeah, I, I, because I'm having to go back and forth between six different pages and I, if it would be, I don't mean to steal your only spreadsheet, but if you want to print them.
No, she's printed them.
You have enough for everybody? I just want to make sure. Okay.
Thank you, Maria.
That's what I was looking for.
And the only, yeah.
Thank you, Maria. You're always prepared.
So if you're looking at the spreadsheet, we broke it down by the months. Um, again, you know, you had already, um, the court had already approved that one-month commitment for, um, uh, K triple I TV. So that's the only one that you see there for the month of January. Um, if the other proposals are accepted, we would run them from February first to July thirty-first. Um, and then we broke it down also by, you know, obviously, the content is a little different with KRS Communications and Lopez Broadcasting. But for the print media, we did try to make it comparable. Um, so really, the ads would run consistently from February first to January thirty-first. And, uh, the, the ads would be black and white, um, and they're also comparable sizes.
And then what about Univision, The Caller Times? Or is Univision part of somebody?
Yes, they are a part of, I believe, Channel, I'm sorry, uh, K triple I TV, and then Telemundo is part of KRS Communications.
Hundred percent sure on that?
Yes.
Okay. And then Caller Times, I don't see in here.
The one, we were trying to, so part of the grant application was, you know, we had to try to, obviously, it's for the unvaccinated population. And then our target audience really was the Spanish-speaking. So based on the social determinants of health, we, you know, we realized that it was the majority of the people that are unvaccinated are Spanish speakers, which is why we were trying to get kind of outside of, you know, just the mainstream media. We can, again, there's a balance here, um, of about twenty-two thousand. So if we want to, um, include Corpus Christi Caller Times, we certainly can. Actually, the Robstown Record Star is kind of, Caller Times is now part of like a USA Today. I think it's a new company called Gannett. So they have similar, um, similar advertising rate.
Alta Hana covers a lot of the western area.
Yeah, let me just say that, um, on the Caller Times, we have an active presence on the Caller Times, but it comes from the Health District. So if you read the paper, you'll see that there's ads constantly in the Caller Times. Um, but it, it comes from the Health District. So I feel like the Caller Times is covered. And, um, so just for what it's worth, I do believe the Caller Times has a very active role with us on public health messaging.
As well as iHeartMedia. So that's why you won't see iHeartMedia on this as well.
Do you have a breakdown of where the most un, because it's supposed to be to reach the unvaccinated. Do you have a breakdown of where the most unvaccinated people are in the county?
Yes.
I know the judge does, and I know there, there's a whole dashboard, um, for that. And the, the unique thing about K triple I TV and KRS Communications is they do what they call addressable geofencing. So we can actually give them, they can do more targeted advertising toward a specific population, whether it's, you know, households with children under the age of eighteen that are Spanish speakers. They can, they could really hone in on, you know, the, the population that we're trying to serve, as well as just addressing a simple zip code.
And tell me, when you say population we're supposed to serve, so it's not just unvaccinated, it's unvaccinated?
It's unvaccinated. Unvaccinated. Fully unvaccinated. So, yeah, we're not, for this particular grant, we're, we're not advertising boosters. We're, we're really trying to target the ones that haven't received a single vaccine.
Okay, so, and, and I would, I mean, the, the, um, the moon and the jetty seem a little alike to me, but certainly the, the jetty with just those little fourth-page ads twice a month, that's not going to do a whole lot. I'd, I'd really like to go back and look at that a little bit.
It actually.
I mean, if that's what they submitted, but I mean, that's really a small.
No, it's three hundred dollars and forty-two cents for the entire month.
Right, so it's, I mean, it's.
For a, for a quarter-page ad.
Because that, I.
But it's for all, the whole month.
Yes, it's for the whole month.
And that's what I was asking. It's like the moon and the jetty really, like, pound the island and Port Aransas. But if that's a super-high vaccination area, then I'd like to know that. If it's, if it, if it's about where everybody else is, then, then, I'm not saying that, you know, like I say, I wanted to send us back and make sure we had everybody involved, but I, I would like to at least go back and talk to the jetty about it if, I mean, the moon's a little bit more. But they really pound. I mean, they get the word out on stuff out there on the island and Port Aransas so well. And I know the Robstown Record does the same thing in their part of the county. I mean. I mean, that's why I really wanted to go back and hit these small, these small ones too, because even though they're small, they're mighty, so.
I remember time Port Aransas was pretty high on-
I don't, that's what I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think the whole thing is to comport with the zip codes that we've identified on our health equity reports. And I think you can look at it again, but just, just know that this is a vaccine hesitancy grant and it's being, it's being utilized with data.
There's a lot of hesitancy for Aransas and the island.
No, I know that, but it, it, there's, there's, there is a methodology and remember, they submitted to us, so we're actually granting what they submitted to us. But if, if we wanna go work for their sales team, let's go back and, and tell them to, you know, but I think that what they've done is, is what we're actually asking the court to approve. It's what they submitted.
Yeah, like the moon did it every week, the jetty for, and I don't know how you proposed it to them or I don't know how you presented it to them, but I'm surprised that it's only, the, the jetty runs every week too. I'm surprised they didn't come back with once a week too. So I don't know how you presented it to them, and I'm not saying you did anything wrong at all, don't, please don't. But I mean, the moon at least came in and said, okay, we're gonna, we wanna do it weekly. I would think the jetty would at least just need to be weekly, and that, that would be my only thought.
So, yeah, so these are weekly. So these prices, so if you notice in the, in the kinda colored section, the Island Moon for a five and a, five point, five, five and five, uh, black and white, it is two hundred and twenty-five dollars a week.
Right, and so the jetty-
So, and then times that four weeks, that's where that nine hundred dollars comes from.
So the jetty's weekly too, they're a hundred dollars a week for a fourth-page ad? Boy, I tell you what, I need to go-
Hey, I mean, I, like, who are you working for, man? I mean, golly!
I've never seen ads like that in the jetty.
Well, it's great, let's, let's keep it low.
They recently changed their, um, their advertising, so they're actually offering a fifteen percent discount.
There you go.
So you see kind of a, a lower price than normally you would see for the South Jetty.
It's a good, it's a good price.
So I did, you know, best-case scenario, did we have the funding to really run these ads every day for the next, you know, six months, and we, and we do.
Right. Okay.
And I thought somebody from Lopez Broadcasting was gonna be-
Yeah.
Maria, that's what I, that's what I was gonna ask you about Lopez Broadcasting.
They're, they're in here as well.
I, I understand that, but they do reach out to a large Hispanic, you know, population, okay? And they do a lot, and lots of times they do a lot of free advertising.
They are offering, um, basically a free month. Um, you know, if the proposal's approved, they can start, you know, they can start running advertisements now, if they, you know, if we, if we approve, if the court approves.
And does, did, did all of these also include production? So that, for example, one of the interesting things about three and six is that they'll actually produce the content, you know, as far as shooting the commercial or shooting the video or using canned video like I saw, I've seen previously. But for the radio, do we need to supply the voiceover and the content, or does that include that?
Production is included.
It is included.
For Lopez Broadcasting.
That's good.
And, and production is included for KRS as well. If, if we want to use talent, there is a talent fee of, I believe, eight hundred and fifty dollars extra.
Okay, all right. And so is there a motion then to, um-
I was just gonna make a joke that I do it for far less than that, but I'm not a talent.
Well, again, you know, if any of you wanna do the ads, that's perfectly fine.
It was just a joke.
Lopez has one of the best voices for radio.
I'm just kidding, so I, I would move that we-
And again, iHeartRadio is being covered by the Health District, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's the other big Spanish-speaking, um, um, outlet.
Yeah.
So I do think we're covering a good, a good variety.
And again, before they start running some of this, it'd be nice if we saw them, saw the, heard the radio ads, saw the TV ads, I'd, I'd like to see them.
Sure, sure, so, um, K triple I TV just shared, um, just kind of a real draft script. And we'll have KRS and, and Lopez Broadcasting and-
And also, public health really does do a very good job of vetting. I mean, we're not using them to be the, the supplier of the, the medical pieces of it, but they do all the, all the, the emotional, the, the nice content of, of the families and-
Yeah, 'cause I think other agencies that are, that have received this grant, they're really using kind of the standardized, um, you know, content that's put out by the Department of State and Health Services.
Correct.
Obviously, we wanna be a little more unique and, and kind of do it our own way, rather than using this kind of the same thing that, you know, people see. You know, the whole point is, you know, getting attention to vaccines and we need to be a little bit more unique in that aspect.
And then, um, maybe what we could do is create like some sort of a zip file or something where all of it goes in, right? We'll put all the content, we can get it to the commissioners. And then I'm sure that it's allowed, but I wanna make sure that all of it can be reproduced on our NuasisKnows.com website. And that the commissioners would be allowed to also promote, you know, if, if that's, in other words, I guess they can just like it or, or do some sort of a tag to it. But just make sure what the, what the copyright or the opportunity is to, to cross-collateralize on our own platform, right?
So, for example, you know, K triple I TV said, you know, whatever we produce, it's, it's your work product. So even if we wanted to use that same-
Like on NuasisKnows, that'd be great.
Yeah, NuasisKnows, if we wanna put it on our website, if we want, the content is ours. Same thing with KRS, you know, Six, they're willing to share, you know, the content.
Super, all right then, all right.
So my recommendation would be to accept the proposals, the five-month proposal from K triple I TV, the six-month proposal from KRS, Six Communications, Lopez Broadcasting. Again, that's a six-month commitment. And then, you know, Records, Robstown Record Star, The Island Moon and South, you know, Jetty, you know, you can tell me, you know, how, how, how much you want those ads to run. Those are, those are on a weekly basis. Again, I propose that we do it for the entire length of the grant period. And there's money enough in the grant to do so.
I'd make that motion, it's just subject to making sure you, you at least have a conversation with the Caller Times and make sure that's kind of in some, if, if, that we need to check it back in there as well.
Yeah.
And since over the course of the year, each of these companies or any of them may exceed that fifty thousand dollar mark, do you want to exercise an exemption in this case to, to find?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know if we would, I don't know if they would on this, right? Not with this on-
On this project, no.
Because it adds up to something else?
Right.
I guess you're, I don't know how we keep track of that.
For this one, we're good.
We're good.
But I, I get what she's saying. I think it's just if the court does any other business with KRS Communications or K triple I TV, it, it would, you know, it would hit that.
Yeah, I think you just have to bring it back at that time.
Throughout the year, you mean?
I think you just have to bring it back at that time. And, and just remember that public messaging is gonna be ongoing, even if we look like we're coming down from Omicron. I'm sorry to say this, but I'm sure there's another variant somewhere lurking. And so I think the idea of public messaging is gonna be available as long as FEMA PA is available, right? And then there's the, that's why I like cross-collateralizing it, 'cause what will be free is when we establish our, you know, the, the messaging on our own platforms, like the websites and, and some of the social media. And that way we own it and we can, we can, you know, continue to, to utilize that. Okay, super, well, I think there's a motion, I thought I heard it.
Motion second.
Okay, I'll mo, I'll mo, Brent, you had a motion, right?
I did.
And he'll second it, Gonzalez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
My subject too.
Okay. Yeah, I think his subject too, Maria, is just check with, you know, one more time with the-
Caller time.
With the caller, but as I said, I'm, I'm fairly certain we're robust on the Health District side. All right, we'll move over to, um, did I say all those in favor signify by saying aye?
You did.
Okay, all right. Aye, I don't think I had, but I said, okay, now I'm saying aye. Aye.
I said aye, maybe I was just saying aye for-
All right.
Yes.
Okay, um, okay, um, purchasing, no, we're Public Works. Uh, D1, discussing consideration of Turner Ramidis Architects for Architecture Engineering Services for Interior Renovations of the Calderon Building. And then the second piece is the actual Architecture and Engineering Service Contract. And, um, go ahead.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Polar Works is recommending the selection, selection of Turner Ramidis Architects for the architect and, um, engineering services for the interior renovations of the Calderon Building. This is to renovate the existing clinic area and to do some upgrades and also to expand, uh, that area. Um, I know, uh, on the contract, it says architectural and engineering, uh, but later we'll come back and do the engineering part of it.
It's really just architectural?
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll just make that modification?
Yes, ma'am.
And could this be a contract that would allow some flexibility so that he's looking at basically architectural work for Calderon in its entirety and then depending on what we, what we select?
Well, I think the, the way this contract is written, Judge, is to look at the clinic area and also expanding on some of these rooms that are there. But I'm more sure we can come back to court and request that from Turner Ramidis for looking at the whole thing.
It seems like it'd be good to have the flexibility, since we don't really know what we're gonna do. We still have to get the roof on and there's still so many question marks. Is there any way you could have flexibility so that he would have a contract to look at holistically the Calderon Building, so it's not just so, so narrow?
I think, I think Commissioner Amadis can probably answer it. Commissioner, uh, we did talk to Ramidis when he was out there, so.
It's, well, initially, Judge, the, you know, the issue is to look at feasibility of the clinic and that's tied into the issues that we have with the city right now with the Public Health District. But there are more items, there have been more items on the Calderon side that Juan and Jerry have assisted me with in, in reviewing roughly about a year ago now, uh, at the request of Constable Oscar Mendoza. Uh, he, we've taken some photos in his office, it's very, it, it's, it's not, it, it was made for its original intent, which was it still has some walls, some load-bearing walls, if I mistake and if I'm correct.
That's, that's correct.
Uh, for, for jail cells, and you still see part of those in place. And that needs to be removed to be able to, to allow more room, more office space, more storage space. So that's also part of a, a bigger, more holistic look at, at what's going on with Calderon. So, uh, I would hope that that be included, uh, just because that, that request is going on a year now. And I would like to see something resolved for, for Constable Mendoza. Uh, his off, his officers are sharing literally room closets or small spaces that you could, it's, it's not even enough room for one person, much less several officers. So there's, there's a lot of problems going on there. Uh, and, and that's not also including, you know, the need of Judge Bobby Gonzalez out there and just with his, his space that he runs very, very thin with his staff that he has. So, um, there's a lot to be looked at, um, with the Calderon Building. You know, I'm, I've always looked at this as wanting to have an open option, you know, I'm not gonna say no to anything right now. I wanna see, you know, the feasibility, that's been very important to me. Uh, but also, you know, do we get to a point where we say, is this not feasible? Or is there something better suited for the grand needs that we have? Uh, that's also something I'm not putting to rest yet, that's something I wanna consider as well. And when we talk about clinic space or office space for the constable or for, for the justice of the peace courts. So, um, so that's kind of what I've been thinking of and looking at for, for quite some time now. So that's part of the bigger picture and something that we've all discussed with, along with Public Works, um, as we've looked at, at this entire project.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree, I mean, that's, that was my point, is that it seems, it seems like you've identified somebody that you want, you wish to work with and-
Yes, ma'am.
He can do probably more than just one little thing. It seems to me you wouldn't wanna waste the ID, waste the opportunity to not look at these things that you've really identified, this is your chance. You have court excited about moving forward in this direction. I would just take a much broader approach. And I too agree, I was gonna flag it, but you've already flagged it. This contract is incorrect. It says that it's for engineering contract and it's not, it's for architectural services. And so that needs to be changed and, of course, I know you're gonna maybe wince when I say it, but this is not the contract that I like. This is the contract that we try to get rid of. The AIA contract is the right contract for architects. It's the one that Kent Brown spent months and months on. I wish that you would reconsider. I'm not gonna hold this up for it, but I don't understand why we're not using the best contracts that prevent probably inconsistencies and, and just problems down the road. Use the contracts that, that are designed to, to protect the county that, that we've put a ton of effort behind. Um, having said that, I really wanna see, um, like I said, I think it's exciting. I would just open it up because you've got these two other issues with Constable Mendoza, Judge Gonzalez, and then perhaps the clinic. Give him a chance to look at everything, 'cause you're gonna save money that way in the long run.
And Judge and Commissioners, we did give, um, I know we, when we met Commissioner last year, uh, Polar Works did a preliminary layout and met with Constable and also with Commissioner and, and we just gotta, and we gave that also to, to Philip, so he can take a look at it also.
So Judge, the contract does say to provide architectural and engineering services. Um, I don't, I guess that, does that mean, I don't know if Ramirez has our engineers-
He's just not gonna do any engineering, that's all.
No, he may have engineers on site, I don't know.
Uh, Commissioner, it's just our standard contract from the county. And it, it says, and it's the same thing for the engineering, it's gonna say architectural and engineering. I just wanted to make sure that this was for architectural purposes and then, uh, and the next court will come back for the engineering part of it.
Okay, so this is just a, okay, well then-
It's our standard.
So, I guess, what do we do about our standard contract? If it says architectural engineering, then I guess that's how it's gonna get put on the, on the agenda and that's, I guess that's gonna, how it's gonna be as backup. If, if you're suggesting, Judge, to expand this for, for them to be able to do more on that building, if that's what needed to be done, um, because I think-
Just saying-
Constable Mendoza's, um, concerns are legit and I think it sounds like, no matter what we do at the Health District, we're interested in doing some conversion for Calderon, whether we-
That's, that's the bottom line.
Right, so-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying that I like the idea and I think it should be, I would, I would have structured it just, you know, hire him for architectural services for Calderon Building. And then you guys can figure out, you know, he needs to go in there and look at it holistically. 'Cause that's gonna make the most sense architecturally and start wherever you wanna start, but-
Sorry, and the funding is, you're, you're doing-
The funding is what, Juan?
Um, Judge and Commissioners, I know that we had looked at possible, um, either ARPA monies or I know Commissioner, we had talked about, you know, certain-
We come up with ARPA funds, that's number one option. And I'll send that to Teresa, I guess, I'll send it right up. And number two would be, uh, I'll send you something, Teresa, you, well, you should've gotten it, but I did send it to you.
Well, we all have-
Anyway, you know, the second option would be Commissioner Amadis and I would split it, you know, as far as for the architect and, uh, and then the engineer. Uh, the third option, I guess, if nobody wants to pay for it, I guess I will pay for it. You know, we, we need to get this thing done. It's, it's something that we need to do, it's something, you know, you, when you just said a while ago, that's something really, need to look at the whole thing, and you're right, we need to look at the whole thing.
I agree.
Phase one, we, phase one needs to be done faster than phase two, but, uh, but, and those are the, those are the funding options.
Well, the other one would be CIP funds.
I was just about to say, we have COs twenty-twenty-one.
That's fine.
And I'm happy to, you know, go, you know, whatever, a third, a third, a third, or whatever. But the forty-eight thousand's very clear, is very narrow. It's a very narrow look at this one particular area. So I doubt that the forty-eight thousand would cover everything, but it might. But my big concern is, is that-
The forty-eight thousand, Judge, is for that area only.
Right, that's what I'm figuring. So that's what I'm saying, this contract is very narrow.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just worried about the, that area, Judge, that's why I-
Well, maybe what we should, wait, make, can I try this? Can it, if, can we, I, I don't think there's any reason we couldn't amend, amend, make an amendment to, in, to increase the scope and increase the, 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 um, the potential amount and, and also use twenty-twenty-one CIP COs. I mean, I, I think that's a, a very good project and I, I, I don't think it should, I don't think y'all have to, should have to pay for it out of precinct funds, 'cause this is a, this is gonna be potentially a county-wide type project and I think we should support it.
I, I mean, I agree with that, I don't feel like it meets the mark for ARP at all in, in the sense of what it, what it qualifies for. It just doesn't qualify except for government services and it's not a government service.
Caitlin said it did qualify, so I'm just-
No, you were just, and it might qualify, but the point is, let's don't, I mean, let's, I mean, this is a county-wide project that we think, that we all think's important And in one way, shape, or form, we're gonna convert that building into something very positive. We need to continue, consider Constable Mendoza's, or, sorry.
Gonzalez.
Right, and, and Commissioner Amadis and Commissioner Gonzalez are both advocating for the project. So I, I would make a motion to amend the contract to extend, to expand the scope for, for Mr. Ramirez to be able to work on the entire, the entire building within, let's say, would a, if we expanded them, money to $100,000, and that'd be 2020 COs? Would that up to, not, I mean, I don't know if it'll take that much, but just so you don't have to keep coming back for $5. And I'm not, and don't, you can't spend it if it's not really needed. But I'm just saying, we could approve up to right now, and Juan can oversee that to make sure he doesn't over-engineer. And I don't think he will. Good guy.
Well, and that would be, just so you know, typical architect, I mean, I'm being very, very broad, but would be 10 to 12% of the whole total cost. So when you go up to 100,000, you're assuming that that's about a million dollars worth of work.
Probably too much then, so you're right.
So I just, I also, yeah, and I also wanna suggest that, and I'm really being very honest, I wanna see this happen. But I don't wanna see these contracts, I don't wanna see these contracts, because they're not the best contract that the county can do. It might be the easiest to read and simplified, but it's not the right one. It's not the one that our legal has already vetted for architects.
Well, tell me which one you want.
It's the AIA. It's the right one for, for, it's the one we're using across the board right now. We're, we're trying to get even with everybody to use the right contract. It's this thick, okay? It, it is complex, but it protects us.
Okay, so have you looked over that AIA?
Kent Brown is kind of the go-to there.
Okay, so then, all right, so let's do it one at a time. So maybe you're right, maybe that, 'cause 48 may be enough, 'cause I don't know how, I don't think we're gonna spend a million dollars out there renovating that place. I mean, it can't be that much of a renovation needed. So maybe we start with this amount, expand the scope.
Five hundred, I think it's five hundred, six hundred thousand.
Total? So, so this should be enough then, really? So let's, let's, let's go with this, but expand the scope and, and use the AIA contract that Kent Brown has already, from the county attorney's office, has already looked over. Would that be appropriate for everybody?
I mean, I can, I can, I can support that.
Okay.
I have no problem with that. Can we bring it back next week during next week's meeting? Or?
I think we can, I think we can do it right now and just make it subject to.
Oh, do it right now, okay.
Let's go.
Yeah, I think.
Subject to those things. In other words, the motion would be to approve.
Got you.
To approve.
Let's do it.
Let's do it. Motion in a second.
Yeah, let me restate it.
And make sure the funding source is there too.
Wait, County Clerk doesn't know what the motion is. So the motion is to, to approve Turner Ramirez Architects for Architectural Services for the Calderon building, increasing the scope to include other areas as deemed necessary. For the amount currently in the proposal, that is obviously subject to, may need more. And then also to use the AIA contract as approved by Kent Brown and the county attorney's office. Did that cover everything? I'll let, I just wanted to get that all out, Juan, before I stop.
No, I just wanna make sure Commissioners and Judges at the.
Do your selection and then your approval.
Okay.
I, I didn't hear that there was a selection, yeah.
Right, I put that in the motion.
So let's select Turner Ramirez.
Right. I put it all as one motion.
That's a motion. There is a second on the floor. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
I just, I just wanna have, on that AI contract, Commissioners and Judge, that specifically, an AI contract that's, how can I say this? There, there specifically that was prepared by, by another firm. So we just gotta be.
It's true, it's the architect's.
We, we just got, yeah, we just gotta be very careful about that AI contract. In other words, that AI contract needs to come from Turner Ramirez for review to Kent.
That's true.
But it's something that they purchase and they prepare for Kent's review.
That's a valid point, but it needs to be reviewed, because it is favorable to architects. So it needs to be, we need to make sure that Kent Brown does the review that the judge is talking about, right? Or are you talking about another contract, Judge? Because the AIA is very favorable to architects.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Same contract that, uh, people like ABM and Land Use?
No, it's, first of all, not ABM. The AIA contract is a contract, like, think of it as a master services agreement. And yes, LAN helped build that with our litigation and our, our county attorneys to protect us. It's a strength, it is a strong contract for the county.
Well, the AIA contract actually, in its basic form, is provided by the American Institution of Architecture. So obviously, that would be very favorable to the architect. Apparently, Mr. Brown has done some work to make.
To it.
To it, to make it favorable or, or more favorable to the county. So that's the version I'm interested in, Juan, is whatever, we've already had the county attorney pass muster on. So, so maybe it doesn't need to come from him. Maybe it needs to start with the form that Kent has supposedly signed off on and the county attorney has signed off on.
Commissioner, the, the only thing about that, when you say the form comes from Kent, we don't have that contract. It's not, am I correct in saying this, Jenny? Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's that, that.
LAN worked to build all this language inside that was more helpful to the county.
And Kent approved it? And you approved it?
Yes, but that's not our, uh, that's not our content, that's not our work product.
Correct.
Is it?
LANs.
How's it not ours if you did it for us?
Yeah, it, it, it's.
If they do it for us, it's our work product. If they're gonna argue over that, we gotta.
It's built to protect us. That's the bottom line. It's a contract to build to protect us. And just so you know, we should be able to say, here's our master service agreement. If you wanna come do engineering work here, this is what we require. If you wanna do architectural work, this is what we require. And then it could be a negotiation if there's terms that don't satisfy. But the point is, is that the contract is built like a master services to protect the county. It has clauses in there to protect the county.
Which, we're trying.
This is not a strong contract.
I don't want this slowed up over a contract. If the county attorney has signed off on this contract and this protects us, on this particular one, I'm fine moving forward. But I agree with the judge's concept that we need to have our own architectural contract.
Yes.
And if, and if someone is gonna claim work product for it, for putting it out, then quit getting them to do it. I mean, bottom line, if, if land's telling us, or somebody.
I, and I've never heard that.
No, no, I don't know that they are. I mean, usually when someone does something for you, then it's, that it's, that it's yours. Just like if an attorney prepares something for you, you buy it from that. So we paying for this. So it's gotta be, it's gotta be ours.
The, the, the AIA contract is a program and Juan can probably articulate it.
And, and that's one, that's what, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's kinda like you're buying the, from, from the Architecture Institute. You're buying this, this contract for, and we can purchase it from the county. And then we can modify it to reflect whatever changes we wanna have. But we would have to purchase that under the county, am I correct in saying this, Jenny? Under our umbrella, because that way it's, that way we use it, we modify it, and we give that to the architects that we're hiring.
Okay, we're way in the weeds.
Yeah.
We are.
If this one has been, if this one has been.
This one.
If this one has been approved by the county attorney, then I amend my motion to say this, this contract.
But this contract is, is a terrible description. Wait, where'd it go? I just had it.
Judge, if the county attorney has said it legally suffices, I don't wanna have a legal debate all day.
Okay.
But I agree with your concept.
Yeah, it's, it's just not a smart, it's not a smart move, because you know, we have had this conversation with Public Works a thousand times. And it's about making sure that our contracts are much more sturdy to resist. And just so you know, it protects both sides, but it addresses the things that you would want an architect to address. I mean, it, it's good for both parties.
And I think that should be an assignment of the legal department to come up with something that does it, Judge.
My opinion is that they did already, and that this was the one that we would use as a standard. But it just, it doesn't, it falls on deaf ears.
No, what he's saying is you have to build it each time you do it.
Yes, sir.
That's what he's saying.
Well, of course, but you should have started there. Okay, so where is it? Let me, let me take a quick look. What are you gonna do to modify it? Let's approve it, subject to the county attorney making any of the modifications that. 'Cause right now, it says engineering 100 times in there, and they're not doing engineering. The reason you did that is 'cause that's a form contract that you use.
I think the county uses it, Judge, not me.
Well, you presented it though here, right? And what I'm saying is by your own accord.
It's a county engineering.
I agree. It's a county engineering contract. And what I'm saying to you is, let's build it for architectural services. And just, I'll, we'll can go forward, but I want it to be subject to the county attorney working these contracts so that they make sense.
Okay.
That doesn't make sense right now, this contract. Okay, all those, do we have a motion in a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Remember, it's a selection, number one, that's the first piece.
And the expansion of the scope.
And the expansion is the second piece. All those in favor of the, do we already do the? Right, I'm saying, just give it, we'll go back to the number one, which is, we're, we're voting on the selection of Turner Ramirez for the project at Calderon Building.
And the expansion of, right. And the expansion of the services.
And the expansion of the services.
You wanna do it again?
You amended.
I said it, and I said in this contract.
The AIA contract, you wanted the contract in hand.
Right.
Correct.
Subject to the county attorney approving it?
At least looking at it, I mean.
No, they've already approved it. County attorney's already approved this. That's why I said, that's why I said we're just gonna amend it and use this contract for now. And then we need to go back and work on the, the master deal another time.
So no subject to county attorney anymore?
Nope. She's already approved it.
Okay.
Kent Brown approved it, from what I understand.
But you're gonna change some of the language that, that says engineering, right?
But it doesn't.
I mean, doesn't, it doesn't, it's not engineering.
Okay, if you wanna take out the word engineering, but I mean, if it's, if they have an, if they have an, I don't know if they have engineering services and we need to use, we may need to use them, but I don't know.
Okay.
I, I mean, you take out the word engineering.
I'm very disappointed in the, in the lack of total, you know, being thorough, 'cause, you know, it just, it's not thorough and it's not, it's not.
I think it's very thorough, except for the word engineering, which is valid. And Kent Brown has okayed this one, Judge, just so you know. He's, he's the one who reviewed this contract. The same person that you were saying earlier had done the other one. So I think it is thorough, but you make a valid point about engineering. So if you wanna take out the word engineering.
I'm gonna go visit with Kent about, about all of this, so that we can try to have some direction, you know. Why would you wanna, I'm just being honest with you. Why would you wanna have one architect over here with one type of contract and another architect over here with another? Okay, that's like one, rule 101 in business. Don't do that, because you're setting yourself up for inconsistencies on the legality of it. And that's what's important. Okay, let's go forward. Luckily for all of us, as they say, we all have faith and, and confidence in people, but you don't build contracts this way. It's not smart. I don't know how I feel about it, 'cause I just, I, I mean, it's just not legally smart to have different contracts for different architects in the county. With, with, with great reluctance, all those in favor, let's do the selection. The first part of the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have no problem with the selection. And then what's the second one, Kara?
Actually, actually, I made it as one motion. You're gonna, you have to take it apart if you wanna take it apart.
Go ahead and do your expansion.
I made it all as one motion, but, so.
Okay, clerk, can you go ahead and make it that way? All right. What else, Belinda, do we need there? Anything else?
So, just to confirm with Cart, then you've got the selection, you've got the.
And then now.
And the approval of the agreement.
And now the approval of the agreement.
Kara, you need to use your mic too. I can't hear you, sorry.
Okay, so we're good, Kara?
We're good. Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. All right, let's do item number two. I guess stay up there, Juan. This is for Public Works. It's an Iron 3 Diesel. It's a used vehicle, a mobile repair truck. And then also, it's a 2.5 ton truck as well, 1995. Both are used, and these are purchases. Would you talk about their use, the funding source, et cetera?
Yes, ma'am. The, uh, the truck, um, one of the trucks is gonna be used for a mechanic. It has a, it has a air compressor, welder, it has everything on the, on this truck. It's a real durable truck, and for the cost of the, what we're paying for, it has a lot of, and plus it's gonna have a crane. So, um, that's, that truck's gonna be used for our mechanics. On the other one, it's the military slash truck that's gonna be used for emergency purpose and response for any time when there's flooding or there's people that need to be, um, taken out during emergency purposes. So that's gonna be our other truck.
That's the first one?
Yes, ma'am.
And what about the second?
The second one's our mechanic truck. It's, it has a, like I said, it has a welder, it has an air compressor, it has a crane, so pretty much you have your, your shop, where you have a mechanic on the road, full-time.
And you didn't have any, you didn't have these before?
No, ma'am. We have something similar, but it's a smaller version. This one's a bigger version where it can handle more capacity, and plus, this one has a welder on it.
Okay, and Cynthia's standing, so I bet she's gonna tell us a little bit about the procurement of these?
Yes. Yes, we're recommending that the purchase approval for the two equipment, uh, trucks be approved. They do fall under, if you'll notice, one of them's 15,76950 and the other one's 32,500, which falls below the required bidding requirements. So it would meet them.
And where are we purchasing them from, Cynthia?
We're purchasing them from Iron 3 Diesel LLC.
Got it. And, um, is there, are there any, um, the funding source? I don't know if anyone said it yet.
The funding source, $13,000 is coming from Commissioner Precinct One. And the 35,26950 is from COs Public Works.
Okay, so CO, you'll take 35,000 of it from, from your CO, from what year?
2016.
Okay. And Commissioner, yours is Precinct One, what, COs, old COs, Teresa?
General Capital, 1901.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Some move.
Motion in a second. Um, so really, it's not Precinct One, it's just General Capital?
It's Commissioner.
Oh, it's Precinct Hernandez's, um, capital.
Yes.
Okay. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay, we're gonna go now to the auditor. I, I am mindful of the time, and we're almost ready to go to executive session. So I think we could take our quick little break here if we, um, are able to get through at least some of the auditors.
It'll be very quick.
You want a second session? Number one?
No, I was, it's, it, no, I'm just saying we're almost there. Auditor, um, will go through his agenda items. The first is a budget change order. It's number six for the year.
Budget change order number six for the road and bridge is a small item to, to, to pay for, a, a small little increase for a lease agreement, uh, 530, 530 dollars. Uh, the funds are available for this change order. And I submit budget change order six for your approval.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to accept? I'm not a motion, how about a second? Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
You have a capital budget change order. It's number 105.
Also, these are very small in, in, in the changes we have for 1901 Commissioner Precinct Two. Uh, and some small changes to move some, for equipment of 1,576 dollars and 96 cents. For 2015 COs, it's basically County Road 26 improvement with a, a, a small increase, as well as some small increases for road improvements. And for 2016 COs, it's modification of moving some money down to cover the Hilltop Community Facility. These are the requests that were being submitted to our, our, our office, and, and the funds are available for these requests. I submit project change order number 105 for your approval.
Some move.
How about a second? Okay, a second for modest. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, then we're gonna go to item number three, uh, to talk about the determination of a possible funding source to replace the county's ERP system and replacement of time clocks.
So, we brought to this attention that our, our servers for our current financial system will be, uh.
But, um, I believe one of the possibilities would be going out for new COs, and knowing Ohosa was gonna join us for this conversation, but he won't be available until 115.
Okay, we'll just, we'll hold on the 115, but just set, just remind everybody, what is ERP? Just talk about that. We'll hold for knowing.
It's our, our, our current, our financial system. It's called Enterprise Resources Program. It's, it's what we countless use for our, our computer system. It's different from normal accounting systems. It's where you have your accounts payable, accounts receivable, your general ledger, accounts files. Uh, it's how, it, it runs through the process of how we manage the finances for the system. Uh, our system currently is, is in the process of coming to a end of life for our, our servers that our current software is sitting on. That, that process is gonna be, need to be changed because of how our end of life is coming up very soon for that. Predicted item in 2020, 2023, at the end of 2023 is when the end of life is for those servers are gonna be. We also have been told by our, our, our programming software company that at the end of this month, we have to suspend. We lost, we lost a quorum.
We did. We'll go, we'll stop. Okay, um, let's just pause and, um, for a moment. You wanna go get him and remind him? For those of you online, we had to stop because we have to have three commissioners in the room at all times, under the GA order. We can go virtual, but you have to have three present. And we were doing so well on time. Yeah. I'll take, I'll take advantage of that. We're on a pause. Just take down all our mics, Connie, for right now, please. Just the mics on the dais. Oh, super heavy. Oh, super heavy. Okay, appreciate that. We're back. We do have a quorum established again. And Dale, I'm going to have you go on a rewind, if you don't mind. We've kind of lost our train of thought.
Your Honor, back a year or so ago, we brought to your attention that our current financial system, which is called an ERP, which is Enterprise Resource Planning System, which is our software that we use to manage our accounting finances software on, is coming, the servers are coming to an end of life in 2023. And that means that they'll have to replace the entire serving system. And that means that if we stay with our current system, then we'd be required to shift to their new software. And every county we've heard, we've talked to, and every city we talked to said that is a wrong thing to do. Because the system is, if you're now having to do five or six steps, it would take 15 steps where you're doing before. They're going backwards instead of forwards. And one of their largest cities they have, which is Salt Lake City, Utah, is also removing from their system. So we feel that it's in our best interest to move. And that's also one of the reasons of the end of life of our servers, which means they'll have to replace these servers. That's a big software change. And that requirement is this. Another issue came up that we're just aware of that Tyler Technology, which manages our timekeeping system, has told us that our time clocks we have throughout the courthouse and throughout the county, which we have around 50 of them, also becoming an end of life in the end of this year, which means if it breaks or we need to repair, they cannot replace or repair them. And we need to replace all 50. So this time, we're trying to come up with an issue of we need to try to provide funding to be able to replace the entire system to be able to manage everything. And we put everything together, we won't have to spend the additional 150, 170,000 dollars on the time clocks we have to change the entire courthouse. And just so you may be aware of, that if we do do this, just the time clocks only, and we do change our software system, we may have to change them again. We don't want to do this twice.
Right.
And we brought this to you before, and we just haven't been able to find funding available for this. We're talking with several software companies we've dealt with. It's anywhere from four to six million dollars. It's closer to six million dollars when we do the entire migration of data and software. And Daryl can probably agree that that's probably a right number. When we moved from our mainframe to our current system for Odyssey, that was seven million dollars.
Right.
And so we believe the funding available is 5.4, 5.9, or right at six million. And we're just trying to be able to find a funding source so that we can work with Michael, so we can go out for a request for proposals. And let's see what the companies bring in and let's see what they offer. And then we can determine what's our best avenue to follow to replace the system we know we need to replace.
Understood. Okay, so with that, Iday is on the line and she has some thoughts about funding. And I understand that Noe is going to be available at around 1:30?
1:15.
1:15. So if there are any question that you can ask that doesn't have to do with funding, but just about the software, this would be a good time to just talk about that.
And also, after Iday talks, I'd just like Daryl to.
Okay, well, how about, let me invite Daryl right now.
Well, just to make sure, I want him to tell us this is absolutely necessary. We have to do this and there's no question and there's no ifs, ands, or buts. And I mean, that's why we have an IT director.
All right, Dale, Daryl, as they say, you're on.
Okay, yes, and I can comment on this as both a IT person as well as a user of the system, as a user of the finance system. If we could replace the current system tomorrow, I'd be all for it. Because it's very difficult to get around in. Our reporting is kind of a bear. And you have to go, you have to kind of meander your way through several components to achieve a lot of your financial analysis and assessments that I certainly like doing because our budgets are all over the place and it gets to be quite a headache to do it. And coming in as I did, it was, it's been a bit of a bear to try and go back and put everything together and understand it. So it took quite a while. Now, as far as this system, in changing this, we have looked at some. Of course, I'm not going to mention any particulars because that would be unfair at this time. I'm sure this would be a go-out-for-bid thing. Maybe, maybe not, not my call there. But yes, the system is going away. It is dying on us there. And it's kind of a hodgepodge right now of literally different, not just different components that aren't all integrated together. But it's also kind of different companies that you deal with to achieve everything. You know, you may go to do one thing and you literally leave where you're at right there and go to a whole kind of a different application to achieve everything. So in the modern world, and that's what you want to do, I don't think the players in this one, as Dale was mentioning about having, you know, too much navigating around still to achieve anything, is that because it's been kind of a hodgepodge putting different components together, that if they weren't in the development stage a long time ago, there's no way they could have gotten to the enormity that these systems comprise. You know, at the ERP level, you know, we're talking enterprise. And they just couldn't put it together like that. Where there are systems, we've heard of, like the city had problems with a particular system. Won't comment too much on that. I just want to say that what you're looking for is that people that have developed these kind of systems kind of right after the early systems. Because some of those that were in it early that are still out there, they didn't really have a start-from-scratch point anywhere. They built up from a long time ago. So many of them can kind of be convolucent to work with like that. Whereas there are some out there now that started in a more modern age of technology. And, but they still, that was available quite a while back. And there are some available out there that do that, that will fall into a five to seven million dollar range. And this would be, when you mentioned Tyler, what I think of is the fact that it's cloud-based. So you've got cybersecurity is protected from both ends like that. And I would, the timekeeping, we can get a system that has the timekeeping component within it as well and everything else we do. Because what's key here is that you have modern applications that are available and all the components that you deal with in the finance area are within that one application. So I would highly recommend that we start researching and looking at what's available out there, what will fit New Hays County and move forward with it.
And Daryl, are there enough options out there to do like an RFQ so that we can get the best potential deal?
Yes, there is. And kind of answer that as the way I see it is that you can do your RFQ out there. And what you get back may prove that it's not just a straightforward yes answer. You get players that respond, but you're going to want to do a lot of research into them and make sure that they're as sound as they make it seem.
And it may be, you know, for something like this, that even with you, we may want to, I mean, this is a big deal and I trust you completely. But at the same time, if you feel like you need some additional IT expertise or, you know, expertise on, not on these companies, right? Because I don't, I don't expect you to know every intricacy about every single company out there. I don't know where we would find that out. But that's a good point. So the point is, I guess, Judge, we would be heading towards a, if we, if we find the funding source, and I'll let Iday talk, but we'd be heading towards some sort of RFQ or RFP. But boy, it'd be interesting to see how we word the RFP and the RFQ or whatever we're going to do and.
So it'd be an RFP.
Yeah, and what we get back, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's software. So it'd be a thing. And I always like to tell people Qs are for people and they're a very special bracket of people and the Ps are for the things. But at any rate, we can hear more about the funding after time period. But you said you also wanted to hear from somebody else besides Daryl? Was there a third person? No? Iday?
Iday, yeah.
Iday, you can unmute. Yes, ma'am, if you'd unmute, you're already, you're on.
Yes, I'm recommending Noe is going to be joining this meeting. He's requesting to be 115. I'm not recommending to use American Rescue Plan funds. So the best way to do it is to do it through going out for more debt. I believe that we can use some of the funds that we have from all COs money, but it won't be able to cover the total expense. But when I 115, we know it, we're going to recommend a good proposal for the court. Is there any other questions?
Okay, great. Do we have, and we don't, we can always provide it later. But do we have a total from what I'm calling, or you're calling, identifying old COs? Do we have a total? I know it's not enough, but I'm just wondering if we have an amount.
It seems like we have 2 million. I'm confirming right now that it says, it said right there, we have 2 million for the 2021. I just want to confirm that with Teresa, that we can use the 2021 COs for software. Is she there? Can she confirm that?
Yeah, she's going to jump to a microphone.
There, right now, the recommendation on the, on the agenda item was 2.9 from the 2021 COs. Half of the 5.9 that is being requested.
Being requested or just being?
Well, the, the cost estimate.
The cost estimate from Dale.
And out of curiosity, did the 2.9 that are identified in the COs 2021, does that conform to what I'm calling the court's previous prioritization of the 50 million?
It does not, Judge.
I didn't think so.
It's just the unallocated portion.
Okay.
Yeah, because we didn't do, I remember.
I was going to say, we didn't do it that way. And the reason I'm hesitant is because there was a prioritization of the 50 million.
I appreciate that. I think we should bring that all back.
But again, we're not here to make that decision. We're here to just discuss it.
Right.
And so it's good to know that there, we're aware of the unallocated, but.
And actually, the 2.9 was just, it was half of what the total cost, the 5.9. Because the other 2.9 was from the ARPA funds. Because it's always been kind of in the ARPA planning.
Yeah, it's worth enough.
The whole amount was in the ARPA funds. But if we split it up, we can do 2.9 ARPA and 2.9 for the 2021 COs or go out for new certificates.
If we think it qualifies under ARPA? I mean, do we definitively know that it qualifies under ARPA at this point?
Yes, we do know. We do know that it does.
It does?
It does.
And where do we get that from? Because I don't remember.
Well, that comes from your lost revenue as government services.
But that's only a limited amount.
Well, we're about to have that discussion next.
But that's why we wanted to split, that's why I'm saying to split it and not do the 6 million.
What if we brought it back for another agenda item? Not next week, but to, to look at, put that in that ARPA workshop whenever, because we've got that coming up.
I agree.
And to also look at reprioritizing, reprioritizing the, or looking at maybe the whole list of CIPs to kind of see where we are, what's been encumbered, where we could move. We've got, we've got at least a couple of million coming back from the insurance settlement that we would have to reallocate for something else.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts there. I think the good, as they say, is if there is a good news, bad news. Bad news is, is that we're at the end of life with this software and it costs $6 million roughly. That's the bad news. What's the good news? There's at least two potential ways of funding. And it just needs, the court needs to hear, we'll hear from one of them in about 30 minutes. And then we'll hear, you know, there'll be other opportunities to maybe do that hybrid, half from this angle and half from another angle. But I think what's important is that we got confirmation from Daryl that, hey, you're at end of life. You know, this would be a tremendous burden if this software went kaput on us.
And I would say also, the old COs, we really need to spend those dollars. They've been there a long time. They're in each commissioner's pot. But if we can pull them together and just use them towards this, then maybe the newer money, then we can reallocate back to the court.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point.
I don't have hardly anything.
You're too, yes, sir, you've been using yours.
Yeah, you don't have very much. But everybody else, everybody else does.
We can use those funds, you know, towards this.
And quite frankly, I mean, it's required under the law.
They need to get.
And, and again, I mean, I don't, I'm anxious to hear it, although I can do the math. I mean, debt is going to, I mean, we've been very clever about making sure that our tax rate goes down while keeping our interest and sinking rate perfectly perfect. There is no way we would not have to, we'd have to refinance at some point in order to keep that interest and sinking rate where it is and borrow even $3 million. So I'm going to, I'm going to quiz Noe here at 1:30. But there's always, you know, multiple ways to achieve the same goal.
You can stay away from borrowing, it'd be better.
So anyway, so we'll, we'll, we'll get back to you. Yes, yes, sir.
Relative to ARPA, I would say, I looked into it a little bit whenever Dale and I first got into discussions about this system. And, you know, we want to move HR under this as well. So the money that we're spending for HR applications right now would be washed by this. But relative to ARPA is that there are HR components that do apply already that I'm aware of with ARPA. So we've already got a starting part.
Good.
Point for researching ARPA and moving in that direction. And lastly is the longevity of this system. This isn't something that anybody's going to come back in any short term whatsoever. I see most of us retiring before we're even looking at this. And that's even for all of the young ones and everything. This is multi-year.
Yeah, Daryl, when you mentioned. You mentioned that because we also talked to, when we were looking out and did some demos from other companies. Like you said, we don't want to notify those any right now. But we said we want a total package, including HR, including our side, timekeeping, anything else. And that's part of this, this 5.9 million includes everything.
And as you said, we want this to be a long-life event. The current system we're on, we've been on it for 31 years.
That's a long life.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we got our money source.
End of life. You talking about that Odyssey?
Um, no.
One solution.
Oh, I'm sorry, one solution.
Yeah, okay. So with that, let me go back to our agenda. I got bogged down in these papers, Kara, and I kind of lost my agenda here. But we're going to kind of hold since we're going to get some more information. And we'll move on to the payments that you've identified from October 21 to December 21 that have been invoiced to us, I'm assuming.
These are reimbursement requests from the City County Health Department, from the city. We held on these because of a different question. We want to bring these to your attention. This includes the rent payments for the facility as well as operating expenses. They do include some salaries. There's only one overtime request, and I believe that's in October. And the only overtime is for the nurse practitioner. No other one has overtime. And that overtime for that nurse practitioner was $5,900. We are submitting the request for reimbursement. These are already been paid by the city. And they're asking for our request for reimbursement. And we're submitting these for your review and acceptance to be paid.
What's your amount?
And what?
For the nurse practitioner for October, her total October overtime was $5,994.
Sorry about the invoice, the whole invoice.
Well, each one of them is separate. We got $19,000 for one and we got $14,000. There's like, there's like seven invoices here for October through September for salaries, reimbursement as well as rent expenses, their IT expenses. And it's an entire reimbursement that we owe the city.
These are normal bills.
Normal bills.
Other than what you've talked about.
That's correct.
And this is just paying what we owe them.
Yes, I was going to say, this is per our contract.
Per our M.O.U. agreement contract, yes.
Move to reimburse.
Yes.
No, no, they're going to, we have to pay them.
The only one that received any overtime was the nurse practitioner.
Move to pay, whatever you want to call it, move to pay the invoices.
Move to pay the invoices.
Yes.
Yeah, motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Second. And for fear that we've done so well this morning, and I'm not going to belabor it, but this does show the irony of what happens when you have a contract. Here we are paying $5,900 and saying it's okay because she worked those hours and we have a contract. And yet, on our spreadsheet this morning, this court voted not to pay $80 to somebody and $170 to somebody.
She's already been paid.
But the concept is what, it's the, it's the concept. I'm trying to have a discussion.
Okay. Did I change it to no?
So I just want to point out that we're rewarding some people who work in the same place, doing the same type of critical public health emergency and punishing others. There's just a, there's an imbalance there and it just, it should be pointed out. I wish we had a contractual agreement to pay everybody.
That's the difference.
I think it's fair.
That is the difference. There's a contractual obligation that we have to meet with this and.
Right, I hear you. Right, I hear you. There's, that's, that's my point, is to me, there's also a moral one, but. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, we are, the last item from the auditor, this is a discussing, consider selecting. This is very important, by the way, today on our agenda. The United States Department of Treasury final rule, which would allow the standard to be placed up to $10 million for revenue loss under the American Rescue Plan Act. And I'll pitch to Dale to give his recommendation.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a, 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 a very important issue because Marie and I and my staff are working on the quarterly report that's going to be due on the, in this month. And it requires us to submit our lost revenue. And our lost revenue is a portion of our total $70 million that we received from the Treasury. So we have up to what we calculate, or a $10 million, and we have to choose either one, and we can't go back, back and forth. Whatever we choose, we must have to. I provided you a real long, lengthy computation. And my staff has gone through and spent months on this to try to come up with stuff. Now, if we use what we calculated, we do have a calculation of $11 million of revenue loss. And what would that mean if we choose that? Would mean that of the $70 million, $11 million is for lost revenue, then that would only give you 59 million of, of funds for the remaining source. Or we can choose the $10 million of what the Treasury is saying, and that gives you 60 million of the, of the remaining for your additional cost for this. We're recommending the $10 million because every year, the Treasury would be requiring us to recalculate this, these, the numbers you have on there. And my staff took a month and a half to do this. So the amount of resources, the amount of requirements that we have to do and track, and, and the ease of the saying, the Treasury saying, here, take $10 million, and, and that way you don't have to do the calculations. And Maria will tell you on the reporting requirements, there are so much more detailed requirements that you have to put in as you do your calculations, that there are like eight or nine different tasks that you have to put in if you do your calculation. If you use their numbers, you don't have to put two. So my recommendation is, we assume that our revenue loss for this particular event is the $10 million that we have. That gives us $10 million for, we, we can use for governmental services. And the $60 million for that we can use the remaining of the ARPA funds for wherever the court decides, whether it's drainage or whatever else we are working on. And my recommendation is use the $10 million so that Maria can finalize our report to do for the U.S. Department of Treasury.
Okay, so.
I don't, I have no backup.
I was gonna say, can I go back a little bit?
I got no clue what you just said.
Let me go back up. It's just that he knows it so well.
No, and I, and I just didn't have any backup to read, so I got no clue.
As I say, let me see if I speak Dale. So what I want to say is that you guys know that up until very recently, Treasury had what they called interim final rules. These were rules that were propagated once Congress passed the act itself. And we've all been operating under them. And it said to all of the local jurisdictions that got money, hey, you guys go figure out how much money you lost, and you can use that money to pay for government services. And then, after months and months and months, and I'll be honest with you, lots of advocacy from NACO, which we're a part of, they made a decision to say, you know what? We're just going to give you a floor of $10 million. You don't have to go figure it out. You can if you want to, if it's much more than $10 million. But for you smaller jurisdictions or midsize, if you just want to take $10 million, we're going to make that your threshold. $10 million is now your new lost revenue. And now you've got that amount of money to make government services appropriations. And what he's asking you guys to do is, it is his recommendation, based on his month and a half of calculations, to accept the $10 million, that that's the better deal for us. And we, we can do with that.
Instead of?
Instead of probably $9 million that we would have, maybe.
Because the, the new rules gave us a higher, uh.
Higher threshold.
Higher threshold, so it's, right now, our calculated amount's $11 million. But that doesn't mean that every year, the Treasury is going to require us to recalculate this. And every year, it could go down.
So you're saying it's, it's take the 10 or, or recalculate every year and make your case?
Yeah, and, and just, and have to be subject to a clawback. And everybody's basically figured out that for our county and for our appropriation, 10, 10 million is, is a huge amount to work with, with, for government services.
Considering, what, do we have three before?
Well, when we first started, the first year was three, but the, the Treasury allows you to do up to three years. And with three-year calculation, it comes up to $11 million if we do a calculated.
Are we saying 10 a year, or 10 total?
No, no, 10 flat.
Oh.
10 flat. And, and the reason, if I can put it even to greater perspective for you, is that.
It just isn't a lot. It's a lot either way.
It, it's a lot. 10 million, look, just so you know.
I mean, I wish we had a higher. I wish we had a higher amount, because, you know, you're, you're saying, I think what you're saying is, 3.5 million can be allocated for this particular category of the 35 million that we got. Or the, it's a total of 10 for the 70 million.
Correct.
Which, which, that's, that's.
It's substantial.
It's good, I just wish it was 30, you know, I mean, because, right, we want to have more flexibility.
Well, yes and no.
I understand.
Yes, it gives you flexibility, but let me tell you, they helped us on two other, it's not agenda items, so I'll get it back on our new agenda next week. But they helped us in two other categories, which are awesome, too, that we thought we might have to use part of that 3.5 for lost, as lost revenue. And that had to do with insurance fund. So the truth is, in my opinion, Dale, it's 10 million, plus they gave us another, probably a couple million for insurance that doesn't count against the, the government services.
Pulled some of the things out.
They did. And then they gave us even another opportunity for infrastructure. Honestly.
They also did change another issue that before the, when we, during the budget cycle, we, we, we put in several new positions for the county attorney.
Right.
And some of the other ones would have been used out of the lost revenue. But the final rule changes that as well.
Exactly.
And that, that moves outside the, those rules.
Okay.
So my, my, my party is that, that we need to assume that this $10 million is part of the total 70. So my concern is, do we have more need in government services? Or do we have more need on the outside where we have drainage and plant, and all this other stuff? So, so my concern is, we're, we're real close to 10 million. Let's just say 10 million is our, our, our threshold, and we, and we done with it, then we know we have.
And the human capital to go calculate that extra?
Take months.
Isn't worth the juice?
And that's for lost, that's for the revenue loss category.
Which equals government services.
Plus, they took out some things that we used to have to consider in the lost revenue category.
Exactly.
And put, and took that out, so really, we're, okay, that makes sense because.
And we're, and it, and it, that category is almost 3 million plus to our favor.
Okay, I, I.
Which is really, really good.
I mean, you know, Jenny, have y'all, have you looked, I guess you've looked at some of this? And I just want to make sure we're.
Yes, we have an attorney that was hired through the ARPA funds who has been working constantly with Hagerty and, and with Dale and a group to look over these things.
And you recommend, you join in this recommendation? I mean.
So you know.
To, to.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And, and.
We're sorry to bring this so quickly to you, but we were required on January 31st to submit our request to the Department of Treasury.
It just comes at the speed of sound. I get it, it's, I'm fine. Motion to approve.
All right, motion in a second. I'll make the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I would just ask to, next time if there's something comes up, if you could put a little background in there for us, I would appreciate it.
We will.
Okay, also, I'm sorry, tell us again. Oh, I didn't either. Commissioner Modis, are you an aye on that last one for the, for the recommendation to accept $10 million for revenue loss?
Yes, I am.
Thank you so much.
We'd just like to see your face, Commissioner Modis.
I know, I was trying to rush to turn it back on, and I missed it, so sorry about that.
We'd just like to see your face.
Okay, so at this time, and I am acknowledging that there's items that we skipped over, so that we can talk.
Before that one, did you get, I had, I would change mine to a nay. Did you give my nay?
On this?
On the one before that.
On which one?
On the $5,000, whatever it was.
On the invoice, the four.
So number four, you went, okay.
I appreciate, Kara, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, having said all of that, um. I think, yeah, so I'm acknowledging there's still some items that we'll have to come back to, but they're all going to be taken up in executive session. I don't think we skipped over any. And so at this time, let me give public notice.
Number one.
Let me double check. Which one?
Purchasing.
Did I miss one? Okay, hold on.
That was Bob Hallpear.
Bob Hallpear?
Scott did that.
Demolition?
We did that.
We're going into exec.
We're going to do it executive session on that one? Okay, all right, so let me go back and say that I'm, I'm now giving public notice at this time that we are going to go into executive session. It's authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. And as the presiding officer, I'm publicly announcing that in accordance with the authority of Government Code, Vernon's Texas Codes, Sections 551, 71, 72, 73, 74, 45, 6, 8, 6, and 8, 7, we're going to hold this executive session to consult with our attorney on the items that we've already identified, including matters relating to litigation, real property, gifts, personnel matters, termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, economic development negotiations, and any other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of executive session, we may come back out in open session and take such action as appropriate on items that were discussed in executive session. For the clerk, it's 1:02 PM. For the court, I'm going to ask out of deference, for the ladies who haven't gotten a chance to get up, that we take a small break and that we join back here in the courtroom if you belong here. If not, I'd ask that you abandon the courtroom right now and let us conduct our business. And Connie, would you take all our mics off? For those online, we'll be back as soon as we conclude.
Okay, for the clerk, it's 4:22 PM. We are back on the record. Out of executive session, there are a few items to, uh, well, there's, there's items to deal with. A couple of tables, you know, a couple of action items. So let me start with the first one, which is Item A. There's a motion to table till February 2nd, which is our next court. Madam Clerk, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Item A, so who made the motion to table?
I thought the judge did.
I can make it, yeah, I'm not sure who seconded it. I heard a lot of people.
Yeah, who seconded?
But, but basically, there was two action items. One is to approve an engagement letter, and then name the person for the engagement. We're going to table that to the second, pending some information.
Judge, move your mic closer, please.
Yes, ma'am, pending some information. We're tabling item to February 2nd, is what I said. Item B was a consult-only. Item A, there is an action item to just direct the county attorney to continue working on, basically, an appropriate
Letter.
document to bring back to the court regarding the presentation that we heard this morning. And I'll take a motion for that. Motion, I'll second. Okay, and then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then Item D also was a consult, but there is an action item that we left off, so I'll move back to that. And then Item E, the action item is that we've instructed the county attorney to, within one week's time, also to bring us back a formalized modification pursuant to, pursuant to the reformation, well, pursuant to the annual merit increase policies.
And that is dealing with the workforce development grants, Judge.
I'm so sorry, that's right. It's not, it's not the annual merit policies. That was on the execution.
Right.
It's on the, the workforce retention grant.
Workforce solution.
And also to include.
And it's a retention grant, and so we're going to be discussing that formalized potential modification of the formula.
And also to include the consideration for the health district employees on the ARPA.
That is correct.
That will be on that agenda item.
That is correct.
I think that's B1.
It's B1, that's correct.
B1 under Health District.
Right. So, so the, the. On E, it was, it was a.
Nothing.
Say it again?
So E is one, is E?
Right.
No, there's, there's different items.
Right, it is confusing. I said, I said, they're both having to do with pay.
Okay.
But one is all merit-based, and that was letter E.
Okay.
And that was a consult. And the real direction comes on the action item, which was the workforce grant on B1. That's correct. And we need some, we're very close, but we asked the county attorney to bring it back, pending, basically, you know, getting some, some information back, both from Public Health District as well as Department of State and Health Services. So it's really a table, if you think about it. But there is some action there. I'm okay with tabling it. Yeah, I'm okay with tabling it, but there's also a little action.
Table one, yeah.
Which one? B1?
The retention. Tabling it till February 2nd. But there is some action that we've directed him to do specifically, so it's kind of.
Yeah, we just.
I think he knows what the direction is. I'll just go ahead and take the table till February 2nd. And I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think I've got E1. What else do you have? Go ahead, Commissioner.
What do you need from him?
Oh, it's voting.
Give me sure. Yes?
I forgot to unmute him. I'm so sorry.
You need to say aye again.
Just say aye again. Commissioner, we couldn't hear you.
Didn't even know y'all were talking. I couldn't hear y'all. Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Was the motion to table, Judge?
That was a motion to table to the second on the item related to B, as in Barbara 1, B1. Okay, and so that brings us to a couple of items. One is Item 7, A7. And is there a motion authorizing the court manager to retain the employee recruiter firm to assist with the recruitment of professional staff for the ME office?
Some of.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, lots of seconds. You can choose whoever you heard first. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Kara, I want you to double-check us, but I believe I'm also lacking E1. So I'll move to that one next. Belinda? Okay, and on E1, a discussion award, CSP number 3187-21, the Bob Hallpear demolition. Is there a motion, please?
Judge, I'd move to award to J.M. Davidson.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. At this time, I'd like to just have a double-check of the agenda. I believe we have concluded the court's.
F3, Judge.
Judge, he needed to change his vote on, on that one. On E1, he wanted to be a nay.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Enterprise Resource Planning, under auditor.
Which one?
E, F3. And Noe has joined by Zoom.
Oh, my goodness, I forgot all about Noe Inahosa. Sorry about that, Noe.
That's a hard guy to forget, Judge.
Noe, it is, he is. Noe, you are going to provide some background to replace the county's ERP. That's the Enterprise Resource Planning System, replacement of time clocks, some ideas, concepts on financing. Actually, it's, really reads possible funding source. Oh, we just need you to unmute.
That one's not unmuted.
Yeah, I'm unmuted now. Unmuted. Sorry about that. I'm at a parking lot here in Dallas, Texas, so I'm almost home. So forgive me for coming this way to you. In any event, I was approached by, by a day earlier in the week and asked me about this need for funding, I guess, emergency management services, you know, data software for about $6 million. And what, and she wanted to know what kind of options the county had in regards to funding them, funding for them. And basically, we discussed, you know, there are literally three ways you can fund this, through debt. But before we discussed that, I wanted to kind of get a feel from the county court But before we discussed that, I wanted to kind of get a feel from the county court or from County Attorney's Office, I guess where, where the balances are on bonds that have been issued in the past before we go out and encumber additional debt, just because of the fact that you may be not having encumbered, you know, all the other funds. But, but let's say that you wanted to borrow $6 million. The $6 million, you could do CLs, of course, that you're familiar with, certificates of obligation. You can do tax notes and permanent, permanent public finance contractual obligations. This latter, too, will affect your M&amp;O tax rate or your operating budget, whereas the CLs will affect your INS tax rate and your current debt portfolio. If, in fact, you want to go out through certificates of obligation, we believe that you may be able to fund the entire loan without impacting the tax rate, but maybe at the expense of funding future capital improvement projects that you may already have planned for to fund sometime in '23. So that's basically the options we have, three options. And, but maybe, maybe it doesn't have to be $6 million. Maybe it can be less than that if you have other funds that you may want to dedicate for, for such purchases, for such purchase. So I'll stop at that.
That's good information. I know that there is a way for us to actually run the numbers and provide that background. We actually have a court next week. Would it be too much to ask for you to run the numbers on a spreadsheet so we could see how it would impact or could potentially impact either the reserves or the fund balance or the potential tax rate, just so that, you know, can't make a decision until we actually see the spreadsheet?
Most definitely. I think, go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm thinking that, of course, if we get $6 million borrowed, I'm not, I'm not for borrowing, let me tell you right now. $6 million, $600,000 payment that we're going to make besides the 1.5 that we're making now already, right? And also, if you go $3 million, then you go $300,000 payment. But you said there was three options, and the option was if we use some of the monies we have in the CIP now, and we come up with, say, $2 million or $3 million, so it gives us a balance of three. And I don't know, I was going to ask Dale, too, see where he can find some money. He always finds some money somewhere. You know, if he can come up with $1 million or $2 million. So, you know, now we're down to maybe two, you know, a million and a half or $2 million. But I think we can, I think we can find the monies for this one here without having to borrow again. I mean, I just don't, I just don't like borrowing and, you know, having to pay more and take a chance that, you know, next time we're not going to have that kind of money. So, so my, I mean, do you kind of agree, maybe that we can find this money somewhere? What we have right now, maybe some of the old COs, some of the maybe CIP and...
Yes. Yeah, I think, Commissioner, if you give us a week, I think I can work with Dale and Aida to see, as the judge has said, to see, you know, if there are other funds available in other buckets and then come back to you with, you know, hopefully with, with a financing that maybe is not six, maybe it's less than six, maybe it's nothing. And, but at the end of the day, we really haven't, we haven't taken a dive into that, into that, into knowing what your options are. I think options of financing, of financing the project is three options. I mean, I'm sure you have more than three, but there are three options at least legally. Then the question is, how much should you finance or how much should you pay with cash? So that's what we need to find out for you, whether we should borrow six, five, four, three, two, one, or zero. And we need to see if there are other funds available in other areas so that you borrow less. And if you give us a week, I think next week we can do something a little better.
Two or zero sound good to me.
So, one of the things that we need to bring out is that there's going to be some questions as to whether or not a CO21 or any previous COs accounted for software. And I'm getting conflicting information.
Yeah, we need to find out whether previous issues gave us the legal authority, so we can do that.
Yeah, if you would look at that, I mean, obviously, there's the de minimis piece of it. I think we meet that de minimis requirement, 10%. That's not the issue, Noe. The issue is whether or not it included, but I have to think that it did because you may not remember, but the court will remember, we paid Software as a Service, SAS, we paid for that already from CO21s and also previous CO20. So I'm, I'm, I need a little bit more clarification, but I can tell you that, that that's kind of going back and forth already as to whether or not, whether or not that qualifies. But if we're going to do a hybrid approach, my ask is that it doesn't change the INS tax rate at all, and of course, that would be yours as well. And then, of course, that the fund balance would not be hurt as long as there would be a plan of action. The fund balance would be hurt, but you'd have to create a plan of action to refinance or to do something like that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, you're going to, you're going to bring all that back to us by next week is what I'm hearing.
That's right.
Okay. Okay.
And is your meeting next Wednesday also?
It is. And I don't know if, what, you didn't get to hear this part, but we had our chief information officer. We basically quizzed him, and he said, "Look, you, you do need to make this replacement. It is essential. It is timely, and you will be in worse position financially if you don't make this timely procurement." So I guess time is a little bit of the essence in order to make a decision so they can go out for procurement of this type of software.
Yeah, I'm sure that, just if you give us a little bit more time, we can share our thoughts and, and maybe a recommendation to you all next week and one that everybody can sleep well with, with that recommendation or that finding. So, come back to you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, wait till next week.
Thank you, Noe.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, everyone. Good afternoon.
Hey, good afternoon. Okay, so that helps. That gives us some, something to chew on, but we're not going to know until you see those numbers right in front of you. And also, I guess we'll do the scouring of the what's available, but if there's millions of dollars laying around and we don't know about it, that's going to be, you know, we don't know about it. But I think we need to make sure. There's also some question as to whether it is or it isn't eligible under ARP. I'm looking at Kalen Taylor's statement, and on one hand, it looks like it's yes, and on the other hand, it looks like there might have been one example of where Treasury kicked it back in another jurisdiction. So those are the things I'm going to want to have answered by next week, is, in other words, you can't pick a bucket unless you know if it's truly eligible. So if you all could help us with that, Dale, that'd be great. I think everyone's got the, got it in their minds that it needs to happen, and now it's a matter of how do we finance it correctly. So I think there's a lot of work in the next seven days, but we'll see you next week with it.
Dale, start looking.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
And, and definitely get the, the yes or no on the old, every CO has different authority, so we'll need to look to see what authorities are out there.
I know the last few COs, we've actually always put IT as part of...
Yeah, that's my recollection.
So I don't believe it's an issue, but we'll make sure with our lawyers.
Yeah, I agree. And again, Software as a Service is already on there, and that's why I mentioned it earlier. Okay. And also, the prioritization, if you'll recall, that we did on the $50 million on the COs, actually contemplated money for this software. Does anybody remember how much?
I believe when you did the last one for the Software as a Solution, it was $1 million, if I remember correctly, but I'm going to be incorrect, but I think it was close.
I think it was about 1.4, 1.3.
It was, it was close to that number. I'd want to go back to you.
We need to go back and look at that, too, Teresa. In other words, the court made a prioritization already for COs 2021 based upon bond counsel, and we, we did that. I realize it's not binding until we come in, but still, it's a good indication that, that we have some intention of using some dollars from the 21s. And then, of course, we can look at the hybrid of what Noe brings to us for the remainder if, if we can't find it from another source. Okay. And now I'm going to ask again, do you think that we have now concluded the court's business?
I don't know if y'all, did y'all do a formal motion to table this ERP item?
No, I guess we can do that. Motion in a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We're good? So that does conclude the court's business, and I'll move to adjournments and memory at this time. And I'll call on, just all the way this way and come in. Commissioner Chesney?
Judge, and I was trying to find the obituary, and I can't. I'm sorry, I'm not able to locate one with any detail on it, but I just wanted to offer the condolences to, to the family of Cruz Colomo. I'm sure if you've lived in Corpus Christi for any length of time, you, you have run across or you have, you had run across Cruz Colomo. She was one of the most persistent individuals ever. She was just a fighter, she, for all kinds of great causes in this community. And, and, you know, you could, you could very easily disagree with her, and she would always be your friend, or you could agree with her and she'd be your friend. It didn't really matter. She was just your friend. And I hadn't had the opportunity to see Cruz in her later years. She's had a lot of health program, problems, but to her daughter Kathy Rios and all the family, I wanted to offer condolences on behalf of Nuansas County to Cruz Colomo.
Judge, I found, I had the obit on that.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, before reading it, I just, politically, I just remember, you know, her community show, her, her organization that she had to have people involved in the community and in politics. It was one of the first places I remember going when I was young and just starting out in, in politics and running for city council. And so I was very saddened to hear her passing. And so let me share the, the obituary. Cruz Colomo, 76, was called home to heaven and passed away on January 13, 2022. She was born September 14, 1945, in Corpus Christi to Paulino and Refugia Ruiz. She attended Roy Miller High School and was a proud buck. She wanted to be remembered as a strong community champion and fierce advocate for women's empowerment. She loved her city and the political process and was part of many political campaigns, organizations, and committees. Years ago, she ran for city council and had her own talk show, Junto La Vista, on KTV. She participated in numerous fundraisers, chamber events. It was a true social butterfly. She is survived by her husband and her daughters, her grandchildren, sisters, and sister-in-law, and numerous aunts, uncles, cousins, nephews, nieces, and countless friends. And so the, her visitation was held last week, and a mass was held on January the 19th at Most Precious Blood Catholic Church. And she was buried at the Colston State Veterans Cemetery. So, and she will be missed.
I'd just like to go ahead and follow Commissioner Chesney and Commissioner Maris on Ms. Colomo. She was something else. She was, she would tell you what she was thinking, and she didn't, and she didn't care, you know, why you felt about it. But, you know, she was open-minded and a very strong person and a very strong will. And she had one of the best political programs that I can remember, where people actually would go there and debate there, you know, and she always was fair to everybody that participated. So my condolences and my prayers to her family and her husband, that's an advocate for veterans officer, and also that he, there on Corona. But also, I'd like to, just again, to pay respects to the Sevilla family in reference to Mingo, Colin Mingo, Jose Domingo Sevilla Jr. Jose Sevilla passed away at the age of 53 on January the 18th, 2022. Mingo was born February 19th, 1968 to Jose Domingo Sevilla Jr. and Enriqueta Sevilla Torres. Mingo aunta quería Garibaldi over 26 years. He enjoyed walking and running down Ocean Drive with his family, charging over one, enjoying, charging everyone $20. And if you ever went there, every time you went to pay was $20, no matter what the prize it was. If it was under $20, he charged you $20. Dancing and singing karaoke, befriending every person who walked through the restaurant doors, spending time with his grandkids and children. He will always be remembered for his love of laughter, service in community, devotions to family, playful sense of humor and bright outlook of life. Mingo was a loving father, son, brother, cousin, grandfather, boss, and human being. Mingo is survived by his loving children, Erica Luna, Claudia Yvette Barton, Stefana, Stephanie, Sevilla, Vazquez, Jose Domingo Sevilla III. Grandchildren, Eric Sevilla, Rosalyn, Mia Burton, Emily Luna, Daniel Luna Jr. Sisters, Maria Trinidad Sevilla Torres, Reina Isabel Sevilla, Maribel Sevilla, Maria Enriqueta Sevilla, nieces and nephews, Karen Ramire Sevilla, Brenda Ramire Sevilla, Brianna Ramire Sevilla, Danae Lopez, Jonathan Tello, Christopher Guerrero, Reina, Evo Guerrero, Domingo Sainz, Alejandra Orela, Marianne Salinas Sevilla, Enrique Salinas Sevilla, Salvador Salinas Sevilla, Kevin Salinas Sevilla, Jessica Moya, Jennifer Ibarra, Santiago Gamboa, Sergio Gamboa, Priscilla Gamboa, Claudia Martinez, Monica Martinez, Denise Martinez, Abby Martinez, and many more. He was buried at the Seaside Memorial Park, and mass was held at DeCobre's Christi Cathedral. He will always be remembered for his smile and laugh, and he was Mr. Garibaldi. My prayers and family goes out to the family. Amen. Condolences. Thank you.
Commissioner...
Yes, Judge, thank you. I just want to shine the same thing both Commissioner Chesney and Commissioner Gonzalez just said. Also, Cruz Colomo, she was very involved in the community. She would always help us, she was a member of the coffee club at Rositas. So she, she was just a great lady. So my condolences to the family, and we'll keep her, I'll keep her in our prayers. So thank you. I also want to say a little something about Mingo Sevilla. He was a good person. He was the one that kind of gave us room there at his restaurant. We started that program, La Voz, with David Noella, and he was very welcoming to us. And, you know, my condolences to the family, and we'll keep him, keep him in our prayers. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other adjournments and memory? Well, I, too, want to add our sympathies on behalf of Nuansas County and our families to the Colomo family, to Mingo and the whole Garibaldi family there at the restaurant, who I know are, are feeling this great loss, as he was sort of our, our neighbor and our friend and welcomed everybody in with open arms. I also received just moments ago, I think we've lost another three individuals to COVID-19, so we express our condolences as well to those families. And although we do not have his obituary, I mentioned this on Monday, that we lost Nick Adame's son, and he was only 30 years old. And I hope to have maybe next week that complete, that complete obituary and our deepest sympathies in the meantime to the Adame family, to the whole Lulac family. And we, we conclude today thinking about all of them, and we hope that they're comforted by knowing that they are with their Lord and also comforted by their memories of their loved ones. I don't know where my gavel went. Yep, it's over here. But with that, having no more adjournments and memory, it is 4:50 on the dot, and it is time to adjourn. And I'll just do the metaphorical, we're adjourned.